You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education May 25th School Board Meeting. I am Shay Woodbury, Chair, and I appreciate your attendance tonight. I would like to go ahead and officially call our meeting to order and establish a quorum. Everyone is here tonight except Board Member Mott Singer. Please pray for she and her family as they are dealing with health issues. So we are definitely very mindful of Ms. Mott Singer and her family at this time. Next, we will go into our pledge of allegiance and then have our invocation. Thank you.
I pray that Jesus Christ is with us, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We praise you so much for this time together tonight, and we're thankful for our wonderful teachers, for our superintendent, for our students, and for the opening of our schools. Keep them safe as we return back. Please bless all that care about our kids, bless our parents, and we thank you so much for giving us this time to be together tonight. Let our decisions be the right decisions. Amen. The next item on our agenda is the Agenda Review. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
If there are no further question or discussion, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is a favorite of ours at this time because it is our special recognitions of a lot of our students here in Winston-Salem Forsyth County, which is why we have the pleasure of having so many of our parents and community members as guests tonight. So we are very excited about that. The first recognition is our Mental Health Highlight by Corliss Thompson Drew, our Director of Psychological Services.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Members of the Board, and Superintendent McManus. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, a few minutes, to share with you about mental health. May is Mental Health Education Month, and one of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing around this time is helping to raise awareness around mental health. So just briefly, a definition. When we think about mental health, most people just think about mental illness, but mental health really is about well-being, that people can know how to cope, that they can be productive citizens, and we really talk more about wellness promotion. It's just not the absence of mental illness, but wellness promotion. We also look at social, emotional, behavioral health, and ability to cope with life's challenges. Mental Health Month really focuses on three things: awareness of mental health and mental wellness, educating the public and others about mental wellness, in particular, helping us to reduce the stigma surrounding mental illness. A lot of times dealing with stigma, it prevents people from talking about their illnesses or the challenges that they face. So we want to make people aware of that, educate them about that, and then also advocate for services and supports to support those that are struggling with mental health challenges and other wellness difficulties. Because I'm a good psychologist and a good advocate, want to remind people that, you know, life can be hard. We want to make sure that you have resources to reach out. The Mental Health America offers a screening. You can go on mentalhealthscreening.org and do a mental health checkup on yourself. And certainly, Forsyth County is blessed with having lots of resources and supports, and they collaborate with us, but certainly encouraging people to find out if you're struggling with things and get the appropriate resources for help. Because we are a school system and we deal with children in our schools, I do want to take a moment to point out that it's very important that we focus on mental health and wellness for our students. One in five students have a mental health and/or substance use disorder. If we took, take our student enrollment of, I think we're at 52,000, it's about over 10,000 students, right? So put it in those numbers. Seventy-five percent of those numbers will not receive service in the current system we have, and the reason for that is we don't have enough resources or we're not aligning our resources. Half of lifetime mental disorders start in the mid-teens. They may start at that time, but they're not often diagnosed until the person is in their early twenties. And suicide, as we know, is the second leading cause of death, not only nationwide, but in North Carolina. So those are grim numbers, but it's not hopeless, right? Because we do have services and supports, and what we need to be about is making sure those things are aligned, that people have access, and that we can serve the needs of our students. Certainly want to make sure that we're addressing our adults as well, but I wanted to point out special emphasis on our students. We know that the impact on good mental health and wellness is what we all want as educators. Kids do better in school, they're more engaged, the school climate is improved because they have those relationships and connections, you see better classroom behavior, and kids have a sense of connectedness and well-being. And we know from the research, having one significant adult with whom you have a relationship makes a difference for kids. The current state of socially-emotional learning and mental health services in Forsyth County, you're well aware that we have psychologists, social workers, and counselors. Our special term is specialized instructional support personnel, which is a mouthful, but we are all trained in addressing mental and behavioral health challenges. So we have those supports. We have therapists with whom we have a memorandum of understandings and agreements to provide school-based services. Our child family support teams, which are social workers and nurses that provide wraparound services to families and students. We have a great partnership with the School Health Alliance, and they provide comprehensive health centers and clinics, and we have other collaborative partnerships in the district. And our student support staff also provide different socially-emotional learning programs and resources to students either on an individual or group basis. Moving forward, there are things that are up for us as a district. There was legislation that was recently passed in the fall where we have to develop a school mental health improvement plan, and we have been in the process of developing that plan. Some of the things that we need to look at are what are our current strengths and needs as far as socially-emotional learning and mental health. We also need to look at what current initiatives we have in the district. So what do we have going on? And I spoke about alignment before, and we have to think about in terms of our needs and what we have going on, how do we align those things so we can have a comprehensive mental health system in our schools? We also have to look at the number and the ratio of our support staff. As I said, you know, we don't have enough, but we have to look at that ratio. How do we look at that? How do we make sure that we're providing the services in cooperation with our partners as well? Part of that legislation also means that we have to train our school personnel, our teachers, our school administration, our support staff in various areas such as mental health, suicide prevention, you know, drug abuse, and dating violence. So a number of different kinds of things. We also have to make sure that we're identifying or developing a system where we can identify kids who are potentially at risk, make appropriate referrals for treatment, and then help them to be reintegrated into the school system if they should have to leave for outside treatment. So it's a lot of work that we're doing around it. We're excited about that, that we will have an opportunity to really take the wonderful services and supports that we have and really align them and connect them so we see good academic outcomes and behavioral health outcomes for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Contest winners by Karen Meyer, Director of our Media Services, and Talitha Vickers from WXII. And I'm going to transition because we now go into our student recognitions. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Ms. McManus, and Members of the Board. It has been my privilege the past few months to work in collaboration to bring the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Contest to our district. Talitha Vickers, news anchor from WXII, has been key in connecting us with the Dr. Maya Angelou Foundation and offering this essay contest for our seniors. Ms. Vickers is here tonight to tell us a little about the heart of this contest and to recognize and honor our winners with us. Thank you, Ms. Vickers, for being here tonight to celebrate these winners.
Good evening, and thank you so much, Ms. Meyer and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board. I have a question. Has anyone ever faced a challenge? Anyone? Nobody? Oh, maybe two, three, three people? Okay, well, we've all faced a challenge, and it's all about how we come out of that. So to everyone who raised their hands, "You may encounter many defeats, but you must not be defeated. In fact, it may be necessary to encounter the defeats so you know who you are, what you can rise from, how you can still come out of it." Dr. Maya Angelou. What I just read to you is truly the essence of the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Writing Contest. "We must not be defeated." And when I came before Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to introduce an idea of the Dr. Maya Angelou Day of Reading in honor of the profound reach and legacy, the goal was to teach students about Dr. Maya Angelou, kind of similar to the Dr. Seuss Read Across America Week with guest readers. Then the pandemic hit, and rather than cancel, our small team of committee members, Ms. Karen Meyer and Ms. Nicolette Grant refused to be defeated. That small program launched within Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools had a national impact with a reach that stretched all, I can keep going, the way, to California with Mr. Guy Johnson, Dr. Maya Angelou's son. Mr. Johnson, also blessed with the gift of compelling writing as an author and global citizen who has traveled the globe, had already created the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Writing Contest within the Oakland Unified School District as a way to engage students to not only hone their craft and beauty of writing, but also to dig deeper, to find their voice, and to not be defeated. Good listeners. Mr. Johnson gave me a call and wanted to amplify our legacy project that kicked off on his mother's birthday, April 4th, with acts of kindness, adding the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Writing Contest. Overjoyed and thrilled beyond words, we got to work to offer students something extra special by incorporating the Dr. Maya Angelou Essay Writing Contest in celebration of Year Two. The students we are recognizing today shared how they have felt marginalized, disenfranchised, or stereotyped by prejudice, racism, sexism, and injustice in their own community, and the collective victory for our community when young people overcome these challenges and become stronger by refusing to be defined by their difficulties. Today, we would like to recognize first, second, and third place. I'm so honored to share this on behalf of the Dr. Maya Angelou Foundation. And for third place, from East High School, with her essay, "I Am An Overcomer," for $1,800, Emily May. Would the family of Ms. Emily May please stand, because it takes a village? From Parkland High School, with an essay about practicing sound character, how practicing sound character can counter moments of marginalization, for $3,000, Ms. Taylor Ellerby. Would the family of Ms. Taylor Ellerby please stand as her village? And last but most certainly not least, from Atkins High School, with an essay, "A Winter's Rainbow," for $5,000, Ms. Miriam Kelly. Would the family of Ms. Miriam Kelly please stand? And I also want to add, as our family members, please make their way to the front so that they can also take a photo with our award recipients. I want to add that Ms. Miriam Kelly shared with me today, "You know what, Ms. Vickers? This $5,000 is just what I needed to be able to pay for my first year of college." We are so proud of all of you, and again, if the family members could come up front in a socially-distanced type of way, so we can take a photo and archive this very special moment on behalf of the Dr. Maya Angelou Foundation. And thank you to your village, your teachers, your principals. If the principals are here too, we would love for the principals to come forward, and please give them a round of applause. Very big congratulations to you all. We want to remind everyone to share your story as these students did. Share your story. Commit small acts of kindness to go a very long way. And to Ms. Nicolette Grant and Ms. Karen Meyer, thank you so much for allowing us to all be a part of this. There are so many teachers, principals, media specialists also who gathered to make this possible. So thank you for allowing me to even get out of the news today at 6 o'clock to be a part of your day. Take care.
Thank you. The next special recognition is our poet laureate winners by Melissa Agie, Director of Secondary ELA.
Good evening. Joining me is Ms. Carol Chandler from Forsyth Education Partnership, and together for the past several years, Secondary English Language Arts and Forsyth Education Partnership have worked together to sponsor the poet laureate competition. Students at schools write and present original poetry, and then two finalists are sent to the district competition. This year, we had eighteen poets who participated in our district competition, representing nine different high schools in our district. And twenty-one artists, yes. Who we have tonight are some of the finalists and our top three winners. I'd like to take a moment to thank Forsyth Education Partnership for working with us. They are the ones who create a chap's book for each of our poets. So each of these poets will now be published in a book that we will share with them. So even though all of our students could not be here tonight, I am going to read the names of each of the eighteen finalists, and then also our top three winners. If you are present, if you would step forward, and if the parent, teacher, guardian, friend who is here to represent, our poet would stand also. So from Career Center, we had Winnie Lynn and Amy Tyree. From Carver High School, we had Dejeanay Goings. And Josiah Spurnell Noyola. From Early College, we had Jennifer Rose Perez. From Middle College, we had DeShawn Burford and Sheena Thalak. From Paisley, we had Kiana Andrews and Mariana Cooper. From Reagan High School, we had Bridget Johnson and Tori Shore. From Reynolds High School, we had Sean Kowalik. And Quentin Morris. And from West Forsyth High School, we had Kaye Brady and Riley Womer. And now for our top three winners. In third place, we have Mimi Kelly from Atkins High School. In second place, we have Isaac Finkelstein from Early College. And our 2021 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Poet Laureate is Kiana Anthony from Atkins High School. I want to thank the poets for sharing your voices with us through poetry, and we'll invite them back to the next curriculum committee where they will actually present their poems. Thank you also, Carol, for your partnership and sponsoring this. Thank you.
Next, we have our District Sports State Champions Recognitions with John Sullivan, our Director of Athletics. We will recognize Reagan High School Women's Golf and Mount Tabor High School Football.
Chair Woodbury, Ms. McManus, Members of the Board, thanks for having us here this evening. We are excited for our 2021 Fall/Spring State Champion Recognition, because these teams normally play in the fall, but this year they played in the spring. So first, I'd like to recognize the school administrators that are present, Mr. Brad Royal and Athletic Director Alexis McCoy. Thank you for all your support throughout the year. Then I'd like to thank the, secondly, I thank you, Coach, and your assistant coaches for your passion and commitment to our athletes. You know, it's long hours, but it's much appreciated. So thank you. So bringing out our 4A girls golf team state champion, the Reagan Raiders. And I'll hand it over to Coach Dale Oden and have him say a few words about the season.
Well, thank you very much for having us. We're thrilled to be here, and, you know, it's just a wonderful season this year. I mean, and, you know, I think there was a lot of things where COVID set back, but, you know, for us, it kind of allowed them to practice more golf, you know, because the golf courses were open, so for the gyms and such things were closed. But just wanted to introduce some of our players and our coaches. First up here is Mary Kate Bowman-Chute, and she is the, also the band director at Haynes Middle School. She does double duty at Haynes and then comes over and coaches with us and does a fantastic job. And then next is the individual state champion, freshman Macy Pate. And she's had a wonderful career already, and it's just the beginning. And next, we have Anna Howerton, and she's a sophomore at Reagan. And next, we have Ruth Ann Asbill, and she's a junior at Reagan. And then we have Morgan Ketchum, and she is a junior at Reagan. And then we have Caroline Schreiber, who is our lone senior this year. And in addition to winning the state title, though, we also set the state nine-hole scoring record of three scores of 100, and then we broke the previous state eighteen-hole record of, was 223, and they shot a 213 this year at regionals. So they did fantastic. We won everything this year but the runner-up at state individual. We won regionals, regional individual, regional runner-up, and state individual. So they did fantastic, and we just thank y'all for your support. Oh, okay. We'd like for some of the parents to stand up when we call your child's name. Macy Pate, that's Kristen Martha Pate. Anna Howerton. Ruth Ann Asbill. Morgan Ketchum. And Caroline Schreiber.
Thank you all very much.
So next, I'd like to recognize our Mount Tabor's Principal, Mr. Ed Weiss, and Athletic Director, Mr. Frank Martin, who are present, and thank you for all your hard work this season. And now we'll bring out the three AA State Champ, Mount Tabor Spurn. This is Mount Tabor's first state championship in football. And we ask that when your, when your athlete's name is mentioned, athletes, please acknowledge with a raise of the hand, and parents, please, and family, please stand if you are present. And I'm going to turn it over to Coach Tayshon Brown to say a few words.
Good afternoon. To the school board, I want to thank you for having us today. This is a huge honor for us. Sorry about that. That's McCain. We're okay. I want to thank the school board for making a decision back in June to allow athletes to compete. to compete. You gave chances for kids to dream a little bit and face a little adversity. And thank you for your guidance throughout this pandemic. And I don't know how others feel, but for Forsyth County, for every student for Forsyth County to have a computer and continue our education, that was huge and I just want to congratulate, congratulate y'all on that. I also want to thank the Principal of the Year, Ed Weiss, for his guidance and leadership and dedication. Throughout this pandemic, Mount Taber has excelled in every endeavor. I also want to thank the Athletic Administration, Frank Martin, Chris Applegate, Michelle Palmer, Andrew Jones, and Bill Dinkins. The football team and all the other teams at Mount Taber had everything that we needed and through their guidance, we got through it. I also want to thank my coaching staff. As a head coach, when this pandemic hit, I wasn't sure if all the coaches were going to be able to come out, you know, with this COVID and come out and practice with these kids, but when I brought up the question, all the coaches said it was all-in. We have a phrase at Mount Taber where we say it's all about the three A's, all-in, all-together, all-three phases. And our coaches showed up every day with a smile on their face with everything going on, masks, gloves, and all. And you know, they really gave back to the kids. And I want to, I want to thank them for that. And a quick recap of our season. First of all, we went 11-0, first time in school history going undefeated. This was our fourth conference championship in a row. We beat two-time defending state champ Weddington at Mount Taber. You know, it was just a huge win to knock those guys off. We beat the second-best team in 3A football twice this season. And we was regional champs and was the first team in Mount Taber to win a state championship. Okay, I want to honor the kids. When I call the kids' names, parents, please stand up. Number one, Lance Patterson, he was the MVP of the state championship game. Number two, Leon Marshall. Number three, Tyrese McIntyre, Offensive Player of the Game. Number four, Justin Stafford. Number five, Colin Smith, he was the team captain. Number six, Makai Hayek. Number seven, Javon Chambers. Number eight, Kobe Perez. Number nine, Kashad Davis. Number 10, Jamari Slate. Number 11, TJ Holmes. Number 13, Samard Ruh. Number 14, Graham Foley. Number 15, Quinn Milber. Number 16, O'Shea Fernandez. Number 17, Chris Wilburn. Number 19, Makai James. Number 20, Josiah Banks, another team captain. Number 21, Marlon Hope. Number 23, Bron McIntyre. Number 22, Max Uren. Number 24, Kanye Spees. Number 25, Ashton Jarvis. Number 26, Kevin Cole. 27, Steve May. Number 29, Antoine Williamson. Number 31, Nicholas Page. Number 32, Amari Hunter. Number 33, Michael Boston. 35, Elliot Trent. Number 40, Lance Simpson. Number 50, Austin Pittman. Number 51 is Chris Glenn. Oh, I'm sorry. Number 52 is Caleb Joe. 53 is Deshaun Watson. 56 is Zavion Davis. 55 is Chandler Harley. 58 is William Wilberton. 59 is Jalen Hairston. Number 60 is Lewis Westburg. 67 is Tivon Malone. 68 is John Reed. Number 7 is Mark Berkeley. 77 is Aiden Weber. Number 80 is Anthony Patella. 74. Yeah, Tivon Malone. And 82, Michael Boston. Thank y'all so much. Oh, well, yeah, I'm sorry. Ms. James? All right, I just want to go through the coaching staff real quick. My Assistant Head Coach is Mark Dunlap. Offensive Coordinator is Leon Marshall. O-line is Ray Rhodes. Wide Receiver Coach is Derek Sharp. My Special Team Coordinator is Brent Jobb. Offense Line is Jared Wilkins. Football Operations is Rich Brundle. Defensive Ends is Rob Dunlap. D-Tackle is Tawea McConaughey. Kickers is Scott Ingram. Safeties is Kedrick Patterson, I mean, Kedrick Carpenter. Cornerback is Kwaney Anthony. And my Academic Advisor is not here right now, is Nadra Hunt. Thank y'all.
As the Mount Taber football players are exiting the stage, I want to kind of take off my board member hat and put on my great-aunt hat because Justin Stafford, number four, is my nephew, so thank you. Thank you all. Our next recognition is the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School 2021 Visual Arts Scholastics Award with Penny Friedland, our Visual Arts Administrator.
All right, good evening. Chairperson Woodbury, Superintendent McManus, Distinguished Board, and our honored guests. Welcome as we recognize this year's Scholastic Art Winners in Visual Arts. There were 26 counties represented in our Scholastics Region with 2,000 total entries in this year's competition. WSFCS was awarded 48 Regional Gold Key, Silver Key, and Honorable Mention Awards. WSFCS was awarded 15 Silver Key Awards, making up 19% of those awarded in our new 26-county region. WSFCS was awarded 10 Gold Key Awards, making up 10% of those awarded in our new 26-county region. And WSFCS was awarded one National Gold Medal Award. Before we recognize our Silver Key Awardees, just wanted to make sure that we, as we recognize the artists, if you are here as one of their guests, please stand and be recognized as well. In Ceramics and Glass, Megan McDonald from West Forsyth High School. Teacher, Elizabeth Betson. Drawing and Illustration, Eva Avery from Walkertown Middle School. Teacher, Meredith Jones. Drawing and Illustration, Alexa Romos, Walkertown Middle School. Teacher, Meredith Jones. Drawing and Illustration, Anisia Robinson, Northwest Middle School. Teacher, Natasha Young. Drawing and Illustration, Benjamin Vi, Parkland High School. Teacher, Nina Anderson. Mixed Media, Riley Clark, Paisley IB Magnet School. Teacher, Alicia Wells. Mixed Media, Tim Lee Douglas, West Forsyth High School. Teacher, Elizabeth Betson. Mixed Media, Sarah Exstrom, Reagan High School. Teacher, Jennifer Willard. Mixed Media, Kate Hedinger, Mount Taber High School. Teacher, Barbara Tren. Mixed Media, Catherine Smith, Mount Taber High School. Teacher, Barbara Tren. Mixed Media, Kayla Smith, Mount Taber High School. Teacher, Barbara Tren. Painting, Dominic Kyder, West Forsyth High School. Teacher, Elizabeth Betson. Painting, Ashley Meyer, Haynes Magnet Middle School. Teacher, Barbara Butrin. Painting, Blair Newsome, West Forsyth High School. Teacher, Nathan Newsome. Sculpture, Elizabeth Smith, Metal Arc Middle School. Teacher, Elizabeth Miller. And now for our Gold Key Awardees. In Architecture and Industrial Design, Maggie Davis, Career Center. Teacher, Andrea Rains. In Digital Art, Natalie Apadaka, Haynes Magnet Middle School. Teacher, Barbara Butrin. In Digital Art, Nathaniel Roca Vila, Mount Taber High School. Teacher, Barbara Tren. Drawing and Illustration, Kenzie Kearns, Northwest Middle School. Teacher, Natasha Young. And Drawing and Illustration, Kenzie Kearns, Northwest Middle School. Teacher, Natasha Young. Drawing and Illustration, Grace and Ellis, Walkertown Middle School. Teacher, Meredith Jones. Painting, Isabella Dunlap, RJ Reynolds High School. Teacher, Kenneth Mulwee, and this received the American Visions Medal and National Gold Medal Award. In Painting, Miriam Black, West Forsyth High School. Teacher, Nathan Newsome, and this received the Mint Museum Award. Painting, Chloe Calum, West Forsyth High School. Teacher, Elizabeth Betson, and this received the Adams Outdoor Billboard Artist Award. In Painting, Annette Kurti, West Forsyth High School. Teacher, Elizabeth Betson. And so a big congratulations to all of our Regional Scholastics Gold and Silver Key Winners and National Awardee. Thank you so much for being here and have a great evening.
As we move to our next recognition, I just wanted to say, maybe Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools can kind of host a art event and people can come out and bid on the art. It goes to scholarships or something. I mean, this, some of the art I wanted to buy, especially the one with the butterflies in the girls' hair. Yes, my niece loves butterflies. I would like, I would love to buy that for her and she could frame it. So I was just, you know, thoroughly impressed with that. Thank you. Next, we have the JROTC Cadet and Instructor Recognizations by Lieutenant Colonel John Brown and Sergeant Major Andrea Main.
Wow, it's been, it's been a year, hasn't it? I'll tell you what, it's great, Madam Chair, to be here today, Ms. McManus, School Board, ladies and gentlemen, to be able to recognize the outstanding cadets that we have in our JROTC program. What I'd like to do first is recognize every year at the end of the school year, our cadets from each school compete to try to win and be the Brigade Commander. That is the top cadet in the district. And what they do is they go before an academic/leadership board that is held by the instructors in the schools. So it's a very competitive, very grueling board that they're tested on their academic knowledge and leadership abilities. So what I'd like to do now is recognize those cadets that will take over the Brigade Staff for the next school year. There we go. All right, what I'll do in ascending order, we're going to recognize the Brigade Staff. All right, what I'll do in ascending order, we're going to recognize the Brigade Staff up to the Brigade Commander for the next school year. Representing East Forsyth High School, Cadet Amadeus Wilson. From Parkland High School, Cadet Wallace Candela. From Atkins High School, Cadet Jonathan Dahl. From Mount Tabor High School, Cadet Michaela Beard. From Reagan High School, Cadet Evan Lewis. And the most top cadet and will be our Brigade Commander for the next school year, from West Forsyth High School, Cadet Donovan Allen. Please give them a big hand, those are your top cadets in Winston-Salem.
Right, face.
Next, we'd like to recognize our first-place color guard for this school year. Representing Atkins High School for the color guard commander and receiving the first-place trophy from Ms. McManus will be Cadet Andrew Myers. And standing beside him, of course, is his instructor, Staff Sergeant Edmonds. For next, for first-place drill team, will be represented for Reagan High School, Cadet Rebecca Gibson. She is the Drill Team Commander. And the instructor that oversees the drill for Reagan is Major Binho. Next will be our first-place rifle team for this school year, representing Reagan High School, Cadet Joshua Roy. Okay, last and not least, we're going to take a look and recognize the school that won the Commander's Cup for this school year. During the school year, cadets compete in let boards. We have three let boards first semester, and we have three let boards second semester. This is where they compete academically and leadership ability is going before their peers. In addition, we have multiple drill competitions, raider competitions. This year, we had our first orienteering competitions, and the schools, as they compete against of each other, get the opportunity to win quality points. And the school with the most quality points at the end of that school year gets the coveted Commander's Truck, Commander's Cup Trophy that represent their outstanding accomplishments for the whole year. And they are now recognized as the top JROTC school for this academic year. And without further ado, recognized for Reagan High School, both the Brigade Commander for this year, which is Cadet Nathaniel Soma, and Cadet Soran Webb, Battalion Commander, along with both instructors, Major Binho and Chief McIntyre, will be presented the Commander's Cup for this school year. Sergeant Major Main will come out front, please. Me and Sergeant Major work real close together when it comes to the JROTC program. And in addition, we work with Fourth Brigade out of Fort Bragg to help them during their JPA inspections during the school year. Matter of fact, Sergeant Major was up in West Virginia, man, it's been two years ago based on the COVID. And I've helped out with schools in Hickory and in the surrounding areas. And they've asked us also, when a JROTC program is under probation, that means that they're having a difficult time maintaining the standards that Cadet Command, which is out of Fort Knox, holds us to in our programs. So, she was asked to go assist two schools in North Carolina that were getting ready to be decertified from the program, which means they would have lost their JROTC program at that school. So, Sergeant Major took her time, along with some assistance from Fort Bragg, and went to those schools to work with them to try to make sure that they could bring up the standards that they needed to have in order to pass the JPA. And without any problem whatsoever, she was able to mentor the instructors at those other schools and those cadets so that they could pass their JPA inspection. A tremendous feat because that's not something that's done easily. So, I wanted to recognize her for her outstanding service. So, she is getting the Department of the Army Public Service Commendation Medal to Sergeant Major Andrea Main for distinguished service to the Army JROTC Program during the period of December 2018 through December 2019 as Operations NCO Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. During this time, Sergeant Major Main provided strong leadership development and mentorship to both cadets and instructors. Her enthusiasm and personal excellence combined with coaching and motivating young people in attaining an education and completing high school is outstanding. Her performance reflects great credit upon herself, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, Fourth Brigade, and the United States Army Cadet Command. Signed, Trevor W. Hill, Colonel SF Commanding. And he is the Commander for Fourth Brigade out of Fort Bragg. And I know it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to do something real quick because, you know, this has been a very trying year. I think that most everybody, to include the School Board, would recognize that with COVID-19, it has been a challenging year for teachers, students, and for the community at large. I mean, we've gone through a lot because of things that we have had to change in our lives to make sure that we stayed safe, kept our kids safe, and at the same time, made sure that they were getting a quality education. So, what I've done is I've left at your seat, if you'd take a look, what's called a Commander's Coin. A Commander's Coin is something that the military likes to give out for special recognition dealing with leadership. If you take a look at the coin, on one side, it says, "Fourth Brigade, Step Up to the Challenge." That means that you understand that there are some things out there that you know you got to stand up for in some cases to do what's right for the kids. And in addition, it also deals with leadership excellence. If you look at the outside of the coin, of the ridges, you'll see leadership, where it has loyalty, duty, honor, integrity, personal courage. Those are the leadership values that we try to maintain in JROTC. I know that you don't get much appreciation sometimes, but I want to thank you for what you do for our kids, and I wanted to give you and Ms. McManus a Commander's Coin.
I actually had this in my pocket because when it was at my seat, I said, "This must be important," and I wanted to make sure I didn't lose it. So, thank you so much for letting us know how important this coin is. Thank you so much. Next is our Science Fair winners with Nicolette Grant, our Chief Academic Officer.
Thank you, Board Members, Ms. McManus. I am pleased to recognize two students, outstanding scientists. They are not here this evening, but they are joining us virtually and watching tonight's presentation. For our Elementary Division, I would like to recognize Sriharini Maruganandey Karutika, who is a third grader at Jefferson Elementary School. Her project, labeled Smart Searcher, won the Top Five Exemplary Award at the Virtual North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair, and she also was a recipient of the Dewey and Susan Rawls Family Memorial Award. And then for our Secondary Division, I'd like to recognize Aliman Shukla, wait, Shukla, right, correct, from Haynes Magnet School, and her project was The Green Pellets for Greener Lawns, and she won the first place in the Junior Earth and Environmental Science category. So, I'd like to thank both students for their outstanding scientific projects.
Thank you. Thank you. Last, for our Special Recognizations, we have our Board Spotlight Video, which will feature the District Sports State Champions Recognition and the Atkins High School Joe Childers
In the May, Board of Education Spotlight, WSFCS celebrates lots of important recognitions. May includes Teacher Appreciation Week, School Lunch Hero Day, National School Nurses Day, and Mental Health Awareness Month. Congratulations to the East Forsyth Softball Team. The Eagles had an exceptional year and made it to the state championship series this month. They finished 19-2 for the year. We're extremely proud of this incredible team. The Mount Tabor Spartans varsity football team finished with a perfect 11-0 record this year. On May 6th, at UNC's Kenyon Stadium, the Spartans defeated Cleveland 24-16 in the 3A State Championship Game. Junior Lance Patterson led the way with three touchdowns in the state final. With the victory, Mount Tabor picks up its first state championship in football in school history.
It's pretty much making history, being the first to do it. That really meant a lot to us. This team stayed locked in the entire season, man. We was in several dogfights. They never got rattled, they never lost their spores, and they got it done on the biggest stage. And it's all about the chase again, getting on that stage again.
The Reagan Raiders Women's Golf Team won the 4A State Championship on May 11th. They won the championship, held at Pinehurst Number One by eight strokes over the second-place team. It's the second time in school history that the Lady Raiders have won a team state championship. Freshman Macy Pate birdied the final hole and finished with a two-under-par score of 68 to win the 4A Individual State Championship, becoming the third individual champ in program history. Congratulations, ladies, on an amazing year.
It's a huge amount of pride because, you know, we're a low-profile sport. I mean, you know, we don't have fans, you know, nobody comes out to see us. You know, sometimes, probably a lot of people don't even know we have a women's golf team. So, you know, for them to win that and, you know, all the notoriety that they've gotten from that is really good.
The thing that separates Atkins from the average school, though, is that academic competition is as important as athletic competition. And the banners that you see inside are hung there, just like you would see banners for the basketball team hanging in the gym.
State championships aren't just awarded to athletic teams, but academic teams as well. This year alone, Atkins Academic and Technology High School's Scholastic Program boasted two state championship teams, as well as two individual state champions and two Coaches of the Year. May 10th, the North Carolina Association for Scholastic Activities handed out the most prestigious award in the state to Atkins High School. The Scholastic Cup represents a school's performance in a broad array of 18 statewide academic competitions. Atkins has won the cup an amazing six years in a row. Checking the standings for this year makes it even more impressive when you look at the schools Atkins defeated to win the cup. Pretty good for a public magnet school with fewer than 1,200 students.
It was really important this year because it was the first year that the cup had Joe's name on it.
The cup was renamed this year to the Joe Childers Scholastic Cup after the former principal of the school who passed away unexpectedly in 2019. Joe helped build the Atkins Scholastic Program into a powerhouse, and they're proud to carry on that tradition in his honor.
So, it really was a case of, you know, really winning one for Joe. When he first came to Atkins, there were no academic teams, not really. And so, he built the program from the ground up, and so, this year was really important to see us, like, continue that tradition. We'd like to thank that, you know, Joe's still here in spirit, and we want to continue to live out, you know, his legacy. The winner of the Scholastic Cup is actually titled "The Best School in North Carolina" as measured by its scholastic programs, and so, that feels really good to be able to call Atkins the best school in North Carolina.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Public Comments on Agenda Items.
Chair Woodbury, if I would have, could have a second, I noticed that they mentioned in the video the teams that participated in state championships, and it was not mentioned that the Reynolds Field Hockey Team played for the state championship this past Saturday and were not victorious in their bid Saturday, but they were runner-up state champions.
Thank you, Board Member Crowley, for bringing that to our attention. At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items, either as action or discussion. I ask that you direct your comments to myself, the Chair, and know that while we are not able to respond, I may direct you to a staff member to answer your question. We ask that you are respectful and kind and know that we cannot talk about sensitive, private student or personnel information during this setting. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and if you have any more questions or discussion for us, you can always, of course, email us. The only person we have tonight for our public comments is Ms. Rhonda Mays. The spotlight is on you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Woodbury, Mrs. McManus, and the Board. I am Rhonda Mays, as was stated. I am a school social worker here in this district, and I want to speak about the... I am a school social worker here in this district, and I want to speak about the mental health concerns and issues here in our district, very briefly, though. The Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools has a robust Student Services Department with a host of specialized instructional support personnel. This is how we are referred to in the Every Student Succeeds Act of December 2015. And we are your school social workers, your school counselors, your school psychologists, speech and language pathologists, and others who provide specialized supports to students, families, and educators. And that would even include our parental involvement coordinators and our family engagement coordinators as well. It is more vital now than ever that each of the specialized instructional support personnel are utilized in our area of expertise. You already have people here in this district who are certified and who are licensed in various mental health areas, and even in substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment and counseling for children and families, marriage counseling. You have that already here in the district. It is time that we actually start allowing people to use their specialties that they went to school for and that they are licensed for in order to help address issues in this district. In the Every Student Succeeds Act, we are referred to several times, and we're supposed to be at the table when decisions are being made on what is going to happen for our children and families. We can address social, mental, behavioral, and emotional needs of our students and staff, which in turn will impact the academic performance, opportunities, discipline, and overall school and district climate. Thank you, and please, let's make certain that our staff, who are already trained in these various areas, are being utilized appropriately in order to help move our students forward in this day and age. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Discussion Items. First, we have an update on our Choice Neighborhood Initiative by Tyronda Mentor, Vice President of Educational Initiatives.
Chair Woodbury, before she gets started, can I do a quick introduction? So, we're really excited, before Tyronda speaks, from Urban Strategies, I just want to let you know, we've been meeting together for pretty much this whole school year, and I'm really excited about this initiative and what it's going to do for our families, our students living in this area. It's going to make a huge difference, and I've just been excited about the meetings we've had with Tyronda, with her team, with the Housing Authority, with their team. And so, I just wanted to just set the stage. Again, we've been having regular meetings. We have another one coming up in June, but the partnership and the collaboration thus far has been fantastic, so we look forward to continue working. Thank you all for being here to present this evening. Tyronda, I'll turn it over to you.
Tyronda, you all muted.
Thank you, Eva. I was having a time talking to myself there. So, good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the Board, and Superintendent McManus. On behalf of the Choice Neighborhood Initiative Winston-Salem team, I would like to thank you for inviting us to provide an update about the initiative this evening. I'm Tyronda Mentor, Vice President, Educational Initiatives at Urban Strategies, and I serve as the liaison to the school district on this initiative. We are excited to use the 20 minutes that we've been allocated to provide an overview. Our update is divided into four parts with various members of our team presenting. You'll hear about the background of the Winston-Salem Choice Neighborhood Initiative, the housing component, the neighborhood component, and the people component. And as part of the people component, you will hear an update on the educational initiatives that are taking place in the community. In the interest of time, we kindly ask that you hold your questions until the end of the presentation, and also, we know that there is only so much that we can share in 20 minutes, and therefore, we see this as Part 1 to a series of conversations that we will continue to have with you, our Choice Neighborhood Initiative Principal Education Partner. We are very grateful for this partnership. We appreciate its authenticity, and we're excited to be here with you this evening. And to kick us off, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. He's just here. Kevin?
Thank you, Tyronda. Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent. You know, we always try to look at where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. So, my role this evening is to kind of share a little bit about where we've been historically. I know some of you all have heard this before, but I just would like to reset that and provide a little context as you hear from other people leads later this evening with respect to each of the three pillars that Tyronda has identified. So, from a historical context perspective, our agency roughly a decade ago recognized that we had housing sites that were not sustainable. We, and it's not unique to our city, but across the country, did not have sufficient capital funding to cover the depreciation. So, we had significant capital need. We also had functionally obsolete housing models. When you think about the largest public housing sites in our city, in Cleveland Avenue Homes and Piedmont Park, that's mid-century barracks-style housing, where the model was to essentially warehouse poor people. That doesn't work, and it's outdated, and we started to work towards getting rid of that model and develop true mixed-income housing. What we didn't have was a funding source. So, in 2013, we wrote for and received a planning grant. It was roughly half a million dollars that we then leveraged with additional $250,000 of local funding. So, we spent about $750,000 engaging the community in an extensive, multi-year planning process. We took resident groups from Cleveland Avenue Homes and the surrounding community. We had chowrettes. We had community meetings. Some we had at the Cleveland Avenue Homes Community Room. Some we had at local churches. Some we had over at Innovation Quarter. And that kind of laid the groundwork for attempting to reestablish the connection between this neighborhood that essentially had been artificially divided with urban renewal policies and Highway 52. So, we started then, roughly a decade ago, trying to bridge that gap, and through that multi-year planning process, tried to come up with a transformation plan. How do you transform the neighborhood centered around everything from economic mobility, workforce development, public safety, transportation, childcare, and yes, for sure, housing. And so, we worked through that process, and we developed what we thought was a pretty good plan. So, kind of fast-forward to 2015, 2016, when that plan was fully developed. But what we still didn't have was a pot of money to then implement this plan. The pot of money that we knew was available was Choice Neighborhood HUD Grant, $30 million HUD implementation grant. So, we wrote for it in 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019. And so, you all kind of saw me coming, hat in hand, right? Hey, let's rally around this. Can you please support it? And I don't look at it like we failed, we failed, we failed, and then we got lucky and we won. It was a cumulative process, and as a result of everybody's efforts, you all as the education lead, multiple community partners, we were successful in 2019, and we received the notice of the grant award in April of 2020. So, you'll hear a little bit more in just a few minutes about what we've done since April of 2020, but I do want to speak to the slide that's up that identifies the three prongs. Some of you may be familiar with historical HUD grants, like HOPE 6 Grants at Happy Hill and Kimberly Park. The model there was essentially raise dilapidated public housing and then build better housing. And that's fine, but what we discovered as an industry is that didn't work real well because you weren't building capacity and infrastructure in the neighborhood. You weren't building capacity and infrastructure in the people. And so, the choice model is not to take a pot of money and build better housing, is to take a pot of money and build better housing and build a better neighborhood to support that housing and give the people who are living in that housing the tools that are necessary for them to succeed in the new housing. And so, our model is to build around all three of those prongs and then to prepare the current Cleveland residents to come back to, quote, "New Cleveland" and be successful in that environment that is a mixed-income environment. If we can advance the slide, please. Yeah, thank you. So, this shows the neighborhood, which I think, you know, is important. It's been well documented what these neighborhood boundaries are, but I think it's important to kind of step back and look at why these boundaries, right? And of course, the target of this transformation effort is centered around our large public housing community, Cleveland Avenue Homes. And our planning efforts were kind of driven by that Cleveland Avenue corridor, the primarily residential corridor running north and south from MLK. But as we started learning more about the way that this grant is written, and we started trying to reconnect this artificially divided neighborhood, there were a couple of things that we wanted to try to bring into this boundary. For sure, that Liberty Street corridor, right? The corridor that was historically a commercially successful, thriving hub. We want to bring that back, and so, we want to make sure that that was included in the neighborhood. And then, the other thing that's somewhat unique about this choice grant, the way that it is scored, they don't, HUD doesn't see this as a last mile, excuse me, as a first-mile problem. They want to know that there are resources in the community that we can utilize and leverage and build off of. So, we needed to capture that investment in the Innovation Quarter. We needed to cite to those job opportunities. So, the primary focus of this development, the target area, is the Cleveland Avenue Homes area, the Liberty Street corridor, and the Cleveland Avenue corridor. But we included Innovation Quarter to try to capture some of that historic economic investment, and we were successful in doing that. So, we look forward to reconnecting these things that are identified here on this slide, Cleveland Avenue Homes, Cleveland Avenue corridor, Innovation Quarter, and the Liberty Street corridor. So, I think we can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so, this slide just kind of shows a little bit about our team, and you'll hear for some of the specific members of our various different partners. I want to start at the bottom. So, the four leads, right, are housing. McCormick Baron Salazar is our housing lead. They're a national developer. They've done a lot of work around choice neighborhoods, a lot of work around mixed-income housing and affordable housing, and so, McCormick Baron Salazar is taking the lead in developing this new housing. Our people implementation entity, our people lead, is Urban Strategies. Same thing, a lot of experience around choice neighborhoods. They are kind of the thought leader in this space. Within that people lead, that people plan, is housed the education plan. And you all, as our local school district, you all are the education lead, and our education plan and strategies live under that Urban Strategies umbrella of the people plan. And then, last and not least, of course, is the city. The city is leading the charge with respect to our neighborhood implementation. What does that mean? That means streetscape improvements. It means revolving lines of credit to local businesses. It means places that are going to be built out and attract economic investment from other parts of the city to come to this part of the city and spend those dollars. We're still very early on in that process, and you'll hear more from the city about that later in the presentation, but that's what really all of the various different partners are focused on. And then, as you kind of go up through that hierarchy, you see that we've identified resident leaders to give us feedback and support and kind of carry the message with respect to what's going on concerning our Choice Neighborhood activities. As a parallel track, we have a CNI Advisory Committee. We refer to that colloquially as the Steering Committee. So, that's a group of individuals. It does include some residents, so there is some overlap as between the resident leaders, and that includes residents in Cleveland Avenue Homes proper, as well as residents of the surrounding community. So, there's some overlap as between the resident leadership and the CNI or the Steering Committee. We've now convened a couple of meetings of the Steering Committee, and we'll get into that a little bit more later, but those Steering Committee members, those members were identified via collaborative process as between the city, at a staff level, at a council level, the mayor's office, Housing Authority staff, and the Housing Authority Board. So, I think we've got a really good cross-section of the community and a lot of different areas of expertise represented there. And then, that top level doesn't really reflect anything other than if something goes wrong, HUD's going to come after me to fuss at me about it, right? Because we are, as a housing authority, the lead grantee, and then, the city of Winston-Salem is our co-grantee. That's been a really good relationship going back from the time we first conceptualized going after this award, so we've really enjoyed working together with all of those various different partners. I think that's my last slide. If we can advance it one more, just so I can double-check that there's, yeah, that's great. So, at this point, thank you for that. I'm going to turn it over to Sandra Seals, who is Senior Vice President at McCormick Baron, and she is our point person with respect to everything we're doing concerning the redevelopment of Cleveland Avenue Homes and building out the new housing. So, Sandra, I will turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kevin, and good evening to everyone. I just want to start off by saying that it was really moving that the board meeting started with you discussing how May is Mental Health Awareness Month. As you know, one of the major stressors for families is access to affordable housing. When families have to spend more than 30% of their income for a roof over their head, that is such a huge impact on an individual and on a family. And we know that, you know, stable housing, access to safe and affordable housing for families leads to, you know, better school attendance and better educational outcomes for children. On behalf of the entire McCormick Baron family, we thank you for the opportunity to present the vision for the new Cleveland Avenue Homes community. The housing strategy includes the redevelopment of Cleveland Avenue Homes, which currently has 244 units of public housing, along with building on the former Brown School site. The plan, which was developed with resident input, will include the new construction of a total of 406 apartments of housing over five phases. Four phases will be for families. One phase will be for seniors. The new units will be a mix of single-story apartments and townhomes. The apartment interiors will include luxury vinyl plank flooring in the living dining room, kitchen and bathrooms. There'll be carpeted bedrooms. The kitchens will be equipped with full-size refrigerators, with ice makers, electric ranges, dishwashers, and full-size side-by-side washers and drivers. The overall development will also have several amenities. There'll be park space for small children where they can play, a community room, fitness room, and access to a computer room. So, all of these will be available in the new community that we'll be building. All of the units will be affordable to individuals and families with a mix of incomes. So, 21% of the units, so that's roughly 85 units, will be affordable to families who have earnings of 60% of area median income. 30%, that's 122 units, will be unrestricted. So, that means if, you know, we have teachers or principals or police officers who want to live in the new community, there is not a message that says, "Oh, you make too much and you can't live here." The community is ideal for all families of Winston-Salem. And then, 49%, the largest percentage of the community, which is 199 units, are replacement units. So, those are for residents who are currently living at Cleveland Avenue Homes. It's for them, it's set aside for them, and they have the first right to return. The first phase of the five-phase development will be located on the former Brown School. Phases 2 through 5 will be on the current Cleveland Avenue Homes site. And you can change the slide. So, this is, I just wanted to share an example of the unit mix. So, we're built, we will be, excuse me, building a mix of ones, twos, threes, fours, and five-bedroom apartments across the five phases. And then, again, excuse me, my dogs. Four of the phases that I shared are family phases, and one phase is a senior phase, and that is the fourth phase. All of the phases are roughly equal in size, around, you know, 81 units, again, for a total of 406 apartments. And before I jump to this slide, the first phase that I had described that's located on the former Brown School site... on the former Brown School site, that will start construction in March 2022 and it is scheduled to complete in the summer of 2023. We will then have a phase of construction every year thereafter up to the year 2026. So thank you. You can, you can turn the slide. So local hiring and minority and women business participation is vitally important and it is something that we've committed to HUD as well as committed to the community. So with that, we'll be launching a major outreach effort to the community. You'll be seeing flyers to announce that we are looking for minority subcontractors and local subcontractors. So we'll also let you know so that you can help spread that word because we want them to know that there is an opportunity for them to be part of this project. We also have a commitment for local hiring and hiring residents from the community. And in fact, working in partnership with the city, we've launched, well, we will be launching a brand-new website and that way interested subcontractors or interested residents who are, who want to know more about opportunities for work can go to that website and express an interest in working and then that information comes right back to us. So we are very, very excited. We do not have a slide on this last point that I would like to share though is, as I mentioned, Cleveland Avenue Homes currently has 244 apartments. All of those units will be replaced. So 199 of those units will be replaced at Cleveland Avenue Homes and then 45, the remaining 45 will be housing choice vouchers that will be offered to residents who feel, is if they don't want to relocate back onto the community, they may want to find other housing, you know, throughout the neighborhood and, and other communities throughout the neighborhood. And the new units that we're building, for those replacement units, we base those on the apartment size needs, the bedroom size needs of the existing families. So we took a look at the families, their compositions, and then that's what we, we were building in place because it's vitally important, as I shared, that we make sure that we offer every resident currently living at Cleveland Avenue Homes, the opportunity to return to the community. So just kind of lastly, in terms of, you know, project status where we're at, we've hired an architect. We've also already selected a general contractor. The architect has busy, has been busy working on their design drawings and this summer we'll start working with the design committee, working with the architect to help select colors for the exterior, help, help select, you know, what the flooring will look like, the color for the walls, all of that really fun stuff. As I shared, we'll be launching the MBE and WBE outreach efforts. We did submit our funding application for the first phase in May and we should hear about that in August. Pretty confident that we will receive the funding, but again, that announcement should come out in August and then that will put us right on schedule for closing with all of our financing at the end of this year to break ground and start construction the beginning of 2022. So that concludes the housing update and I am now going to introduce Hasani Mitchell with the City of Winston-Salem.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Hasani Mitchell representing the City of Winston-Salem. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Madam Superintendent and members of the school board. So the City of Winston-Salem, as Kevin mentioned, is a co-grantee of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative and our responsibility as the city is to oversee the neighborhood's strategy. So through investments catalyzed by the grant and a shared vision spearheaded by the residents, the neighborhood should enjoy improved amenities and I'll go into these economic investment, effective public schools and increased public safety. Our objectives as the lead over the neighborhood's strategy is to ensure that the project area is safe, so there is a public safety component. Our objective is also, as Kevin mentioned, is to ensure that the, the Choice Neighborhoods project area is economically prosperous and that it's connected economically to the rest of the city. And we also want to ensure that the neighborhood is welcoming to all residents and that the neighborhood is well-connected, that it has quality public infrastructure. And so I do want to emphasize, the neighborhood's strategy is the area outside of Cleveland Avenue Homes. So I believe the map was put up earlier. So the entire area outside of Cleveland Avenue Homes is the City of Winston-Salem's responsibility. And so how do we do this? Well, through resident-led engagement, we utilize, we'll utilize a portion of the grant funds to ensure that the neighborhood has improved amenities. And these could include, but not limited to, placemaking, green spaces, ensuring that there are public spaces that promote health and wellbeing and all of, and those components are led by the residents as well as guided by the Steering Committee. We'll also ensure that there is robust economic investment. So the portion of the grant that the city will utilize, Liberty Street is a focus. There are some parts of the neighborhood that we want to make sure they're economically viable, either commercially or residentially. Effective schools, so as Kevin mentioned and the reason why we're here tonight, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is the education partner. And a part of that goal is the construction of a new Ashley Elementary, which is directly adjacent to the new housing development. And of course, increased public safety, both violent and non-violent crimes. So through investments catalyzed by the grant, the City of Winston-Salem, we will be implementing what's, what's formerly known as critical community improvements. So we'll be carrying out a robust plan for engaging the residents inside of Cleveland Avenue Homes, but also the area outside of Cleveland Avenue Homes to determine what critical community improvements, what amenities, what economic investment projects, what residential or commercial projects that the residents want to see in this community. That is all for me and I will turn it over to the next presenter.
Good evening. I'm Tanya Atkins, Senior Project Manager with Urban Strategies in the Cleveland Avenue Homes Community. Urban Strategies is a national nonprofit organization that specializes in results-informed human service development, planning and strategy implementation as part of comprehensive neighborhood revitalization. Our mission is that all children and families are stable and thriving. In August 2020, during the pandemic, our local team began working with residents to provide family support services, which included case management, completion of household assessments and relocation assistance as our families progress along their paths to become economically self-sufficient. Currently, 53% of the total residents in our target area are ages zero through 18. 76% of that number are pre-K through 12th grade. 92% are African-American and 70% females. Next slide. Through the people's strategy, we want to ensure that all families are stable and able to thrive. Case management underpins all the work that we do. For example, with health and wellness, it ensures that residents have access to high-quality healthcare. In education, it ensures a creative career pathway is in place, which focuses on academic performance and parental engagement. With economic mobility, it ensures that residents have the financial resources to maintain housing stability and achieve a living wage. And with housing stability, it helps to ensure that residents are able to live in safe, affordable housing before, during and after redevelopment. Next slide, please. We're very fortunate to have community partners like this Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System, which is our primary education partners and other partners that are shown here in blue. You all support the work and our efforts in Cleveland Avenue Homes Community as our residents move along the education pathway, which the Shay Blake will provide in more detail. Thank you for the opportunity to present our information. Shay.
Thank you, Tanya. As part of the people plan, there's a focus on education. Me, the education specialist for Urban Strategies, I work with our family support staff and our education network to improve the academic and developmental outcomes for our 208 children who live out at Cleveland Avenue Homes, zero to ages 18. This is about 77% of our youth population and the numbers are continuing to increase. I coordinate the education network that, to ensure that our target population enter kindergarten-ready to learn, are proficient in reading and math and graduate from high school, ready for college or a career. My network is divided into equity action teams based on those three result areas and we're open to including more educational network members as we move along the grant. The visual that you currently see on the screen depicts what our education model is. Some of the strategies we use to help our target population become kindergarten-ready are ensuring that children are screened for delays in accessing interventions, providing access to high-quality learning programs and also offering two generational literacy opportunities. Currently, 42% of our children ages zero to four are connected to quality learning programs through programs like family services, childcare resource centers and local schools for pre-K. We have also partner, we also have partners who assist parents with special needs as well. For example, recently, we identified 12 families who have children who are getting ready to enter into kindergarten and we partnered with Cook Elementary on an event to try to make sure we got all 12, all 12 families registered for kindergarten. When it comes to the population of our children who are in the core academics or proficiency, we're making sure that we are enrolling them into out-of-school time activities, particularly now to reduce, to, to increase performance over the summer as definitely as well to make up for some of the academics lost during the pandemic. Next month, we're also going to be working with school leaders around the district to discuss the development of an attendance awareness team and an improvement program that we can kick off in the fall of 2021. Currently, about 41% of our school-aged children have been re-engaged back into after-school programs or learning centers that provide them with academic assistance. Again, for example, we operated a onsite remote learning lab called the Marie Rose, Marie Roseboro Learning Lab that was open on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays from 11 to 3, but as schools increased to in-person days, we operate now on Wednesdays from 11 to 3. And that is in partnership with Housing Authority and Neighborhood Hands who provide tutors for students to get assistance with. Some of the strategies we use to help our target population graduate from high school include connecting them with college and career opportunities and also occupational skills employment during the summer. We currently have 10 rising juniors and we have four seniors who are graduating this year and we want to make sure that we're providing them all with everything that they need to be on the path to successfully graduate on time and to have an opportunity therefore after. It is important that we engage our parents in their children's education, so we are including this into their family development plan goals. That way, we can make sure we're helping move their children through the pipeline and getting them to the finish line, which of course is graduating high school. In addition, we have partnered with Crosby Scholars who have provided onsite STEM workshops for our children and we've also partnered with organizations like Habitat for Humanities Youth Empowerment Program to provide social and emotional workshops for children, workshops on credit improvement and also field trips such as to the Biltmore in Asheville and we're taking them to the Harvey Gant African-American Museum in Charlotte this Saturday. Currently, looking at our population, we have about 42% of our residents that say they have a high school diploma and only 30% have moved on into higher education. And by incorporating our partnerships with Goodwill, Forsyth Tech and Winston-Salem State, we're making sure that we are connecting our children who are in high school and helping them to develop a plan for after-high school, so that way we can help increase that number of high school, of high residents who have a high school diploma and also increase that number of residents who moved on into higher education. And we also look to build the capacity of the parents as well as another goal of ours. And at this point, I will pass it to Tyronda to kind of give you a little more information about that.
Thank you, Shay. You can take down the slide deck. But thank you, Kevin, for projecting the slides for us. And I want to apologize for the depiction of the National Education Pathway. I believe that you all have a copy of the PDF, so I'm hoping that your version in writing looks better than what you saw on the screen. As we move to close out our presentation and to answer your questions, I just want to share that like Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, Choice Neighborhood Initiative has a strong focus on educational equity and as such, we use data to monitor our progress. So I wanted to just acknowledge Andrew Kraft and his team who are working with us to implement our data sharing agreement to track the progress of our cohort of children. As of today, 100% of our HUD reporting is on track thanks to his team and we're learning a lot from the data to inform our strategies and work together. We also have regular meetings with the superintendent, as she said, as well as with our liaison, Nicolette Grant and other key leaders to collaborate around critical school issues like relocation, like perhaps what training opportunities exist in the partnership through CNI, both neighborhood and housing and so forth, and also attendance awareness. So these are the contributions that we're able to make to those three big result areas, kindergarten readiness, proficiency in reading and math and high school, college graduation, high school graduation and college and career. So we'll be meeting with these key leaders quarterly. We have dates already assigned, June 30th, September 8th, December 8th. And similar to this, again, it's collaboration and conversation around critical school issues, but also giving them an update, similar to what we're doing for you today because if parents come into the schools and ask, what's going on with this Choice Neighborhood Initiative, or if they hear something that is said that is probably untrue, the key leaders in the schools will have the information to be able to share with parents. So with that, we'll be in Winston-Salem the week of June 21st, meeting in person with, with our partners and with our school leaders and we thank you so much for your time and we can answer any questions you might have at this time.
I have one question.
And I can't see you, so if someone could help me to facilitate the questions, that would be awesome.
Yes, Ms. Mentor, this is Ms. Woodbury. I will help you to facilitate the questions. First, we have Board Member Crowley with questions.
Thank you. I was just curious on the educational part, hearing, you know, I was really impressed with how you identified students in different grades or age groups and identified what their needs were and was just wondering, how do school boundaries affect your ability to support students? Because I knew, I heard you say Cook Elementary and I would have assumed a lot of children in Cleveland Avenue were going to Ashley. So, and I know that, I know Cleveland Avenue Homes area is divided at least two different high schools. So I was just curious about how do school boundaries affect your ability to support students?
Thank you. That is a great question. We have, we have the information about the schools that our children attend, so we know where they are and we are able to support them wherever they go, whatever school they go to. So if they live in Cleveland Avenue Homes and they go to school, to a residential school, we're able to support them in that regard. We're also able to support them at any school they may choose to go through, go to throughout this relocation process. Even if a family decides to move out of town, and I know that's a stretch, but we're required to follow those families for the duration of our Choice Neighborhood Initiative. And what's really cool about this opportunity is you heard Shay talk about there being about 200 and he can correct me on the number, 200-plus children. This is a really good number to be able to put our arms around and to keep up with and track. We know that children will be born into the population, right, over the course of five years, but we also know that children will be graduating out of the cohort as well. But we're required, no matter where they go to school, to track them for the duration of this project regardless of school boundaries.
Thank you. I got a question.
Did I, I wish I could see you so I could engage, but did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Board Member Calvert-Hays.
Thank you. I'm, I'm really impressed that you are using local contractors and you said you had a local architect also onboard. I think that's really, really important to be able to use locals here in our community. Another thing that I was impressed was with was your, I noticed your medical that you had put in there, Daymark for one, Recovery Center for Mental Health, which is what we've been talking about right now. Also your dentistry, you know, you have that included and your medical for, for our kids. The only thing I didn't hear anything of, and that may just be something that's forthcoming, was transportation. Can you give me some background on transportation? Because I find a lot of our people, a lot of times have to depend on the transportation to get of times, have to depend on the transportation to get where they, they need to be, such as Daymark, such as Baptist Hospital, such as areas that they will be more than likely coming in contact with. So could you give me some ideas that you have on transportation for people that do not have transportation, even though that's centrally located? It's still, you know, quite a ways from, from our hospitals in, in different mental health areas.
Yes, if, yes, if I heard your question correctly, it's about transportation for families who may not have transportation, correct, for people who don't have it?
Yeah, that's part of it.
Let me open it up to our group to see if anybody would want to tackle that, and then we'll, I'll come back. Anyone in our group? Because we can see it from a variety of different angles, employment angle, education angle, so forth.
I'll go ahead and start. I'm Eva Mose, being the original Vice President, Urban Strategies, and we are meeting with the local transportation provider to find what are the best routes. Can we have some routes rerouted, especially as we do the rebuild? But the local team, which is hired there locally, they work with the families, they identify those needs, and try to assist them with the resources. Even if it means if there's someone going for a job interview, they have to carry them themselves. We've had that to happen there in Cleveland Avenue. They carried a young lady for a job interview. She had a drug test that same day. They stayed with her, so she had that drug test. That's one of the extent we go through, whatever it takes, we're willing to work with that family to ensure those needs are met. And Tanya, you may want to get a little bit more, since you're there on the ground.
Okay, I appreciate that. I would like to hear more on that, on the transportation, you know, as it, as it comes forward. And also, I would like to hear more on the local contractors, architects, and all that you have, because, you know, I think it's very, very important. We have a lot of people that are looking for, for work now, and this is a great opportunity for contractors, for different people in our area to be able to get work. So thank you so much.
And thank you for raising that question. It's a great one. I want to be mindful of the time, so I'll let you all tell me when to stop, but are there any other questions?
Yes, this is Board Member Bohannon. I was looking at the unit mix, and I noticed that there is one five-bedroom.
Just speak up just a little bit. We're having a hard time.
Oh, okay. Can you hear me?
That's better.
Just get loud, like, okay, I was trying to be cognizant of the, I noticed in the unit mix that there is one five-bedroom that's planned. I think it's in the fifth phase, right? And I know that you said earlier that it was, I just wondered why there was only one, one five-bedroom planned, and really, you know, was that based on need? Somebody in Cleveland needed that, or, okay, I see people nodding up and down, so yeah, okay.
Yes. Again, this is Sandra Seals with McCormick Baron. Thank you for the, that question. So that is based on need. So when we took a look at the Housing Authority's files and the family composition, for our current resident need, there was, there was one five-bedroom that was needed based on the family size, and so that's why that number is only one. We don't find a lot of demand for larger units, so that's why we kind of matched that to the need. And if, for example, if there, if, you know, families there demonstrated a need for five, five-bedrooms, that's what we would have replaced. But based on the current families and, you know, their family size, there was a need for one five-bedroom.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Just to expound upon, this is Board Member Woodbury, just to expound upon the question that Board Member Bohannon asked in regards to the need of the families. I just want to be very transparent in recognizing, on the board's side, you know, we are very concerned about our transient family issues and homelessness, because we know that that's one of the greatest determinants of academic success for our students. We know in a very clear way that there is a national issue around the displacement of the poor due to gentrification. I just want to put that on the table, because people in our community have raised the question around the school board being in a very authentic relationship with Choice Neighborhood, and it doesn't displace our families, because of course, if our families are displaced and living from pillar to pole, then, you know, it, it's, it's not progressive, to say the least. So we just want to make sure, I think, from the school board end, that those families do have a real chance to come back into the neighborhood and, you know, continue to have, you know, quality, quality life. And so I would just ask if possibly we can look at the data now of the, of our families in Cleveland, and then where it will be as it relates to the number of, I guess, the number of rooms that are needed. So the families that are in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, what do they live in now, and then how will they be accommodated, you know, throughout those phases? Because you could see that the phases happen in different years, so I guess, how, how are we assured, and I don't want to say assured, but how can we help those families to be comfortable around? It's a phased approach in that they will have an opportunity to return back to Cleveland Homes.
And Chair Woodbury, that actually was, I was just about to ask a similar question, because I wanted to know if you all were assisting families in, in the period of finding housing while the phases are happening? Are you assisting families with finding other places to live?
And what percentage of vouchers are you going to be giving to, I mean, how many are going to want to do that and leave Cleveland?
Thank you. So I'll, I'll, I'll start us off, and then I'm going to let, you know, Tanya in her team at Urban Strategies chime in and talk about the case management and how her team are working with each and every family. And, and so, thank you for those comments, and we are kind of very cognizant of what you've shared in some of the earlier meetings that we had with families. They voiced the same concern. You know, one of the things that we're doing is handling the phasing over, the building of the new housing over multiple phases, and we're relocating over multiple phases, ideally just so that we do not impact all of the residents at once, so that we don't have a situation where we're taking two-hundred-and-forty-four families and trying to help them all find housing at once. So by doing a multiple-phased approach, we're able to slowly move families out, but after meeting with them through case management, finding out, again, their family size, what the needs of their children, where their children go to school. We know that some families want to relocate offsite. They would like to take a housing choice voucher and move offsite. Some families say they're not sure if they want to return to the new community at all, although they always have, they have the right to. But through the conversations with case man, with case management, we're able to kind of identify what a family's need is. And regarding helping them, we will be working closely with the families on relocation. So we are not just saying to families, "You have to move," but the case managers will work with them in identifying a new, a new home to move into. They will help them with moving. They will help them with every aspect of that relocation, and those families will stay in touch with those families throughout the entire process until they return to the new community. So, Tanya, do you want to kind of jump in?
Well, I'm just going to add just an additional piece of, just want to take a step back. In August twenty-twenty, when we, that's when the local team began working with the families in Cleveland Avenue Homes, and what we did is, we canvassed the neighborhood, so a hundred percent of the, a hundred percent of the households have been outreach. Then we signed the families up for case management. And so when they signed up for case management, which is really more family supports, what we do is we complete an in-depth assessment of that household. So the head of the household gets one assessment, and that's based on, you know, the dynamics of, you know, kind of where their education is, where their income is, and different things like that. We also complete a youth assessment, because what we want to know and understand is where our children are academically and what supports they need to have in place. All of that is done in, prior to starting the relocation process. What is important is that we have as comprehensive information on each family prior to relocation so that we can adequately serve them throughout that process. We will be with families during and after redevelopment, and in whatever capacity they need for us to be there, we're going to be there for them, whether it be to address their, you know, one of the things that we want to discuss with the school board at a later date is the education part of the relocation plan. We want to make sure that you all are at the table with us as we finalize the discussion on where the children are going to go. Currently, the three primary schools that our children serve, are, attend are Cook Elementary, Paisley, and Carver. That is the primary schools, although we do have some children that are attending in other different areas. So for us, it's, it's about understanding the family's needs. It's about removing whatever barriers they have that are prohibiting them from becoming economically self-sufficient and helping them along their path to being stable and thriving. So I hope I've answered your question. If not, I can elaborate a little further.
I, I think so. I, I think that we'll just work through the Office of the Superintendent for any data points that the school board may have. And I would just lastly like to say on my part, just so that the school board can be fully aware of the Marie Roseborough Learning Center, it is truly a grassroots, authentic place that was built through the leadership of Mr. Cheshire's office, City Council, and actually our school district. There was a very organic meeting that the three entities had to build that space, and the tutors that are provided through the Helping Hands are actually Winston-Salem Forsyth County School tutors. So it is a very, I, I think, grassroots, real, caring partnership that provides the students over there with an opportunity to have access to, you know, whatever extended educational needs that they, that they have. So I just wanted to make sure that this board was fully aware, and I would like to definitely thank Lauren Richards, who I recall on the first day that that site was introduced to the community, made sure that our buses were there with the, with access to Wi-Fi, and the food was there for the children to come and eat lunch. So it has been, you know, definitely a labor of love on behalf of Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools to make sure that the Marie Roseborough Learning Center was operating effectively.
Thank you so much for that. Again, I just want to be mindful of the time, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, and hope this will be part one to a series of conversations we continue to have with you all as equal partners in this, as we take this journey to ensure that families at Cleveland Avenue Homes are stable and thriving over the course of our program. So thank you so much.
Thank you. You all have a good evening.
I just want to interject real briefly. I know that they ask about homelessness, know, really concerned about whether the family will be homeless. Urban Strategies really work with the family. We advocate on behalf of the family to ensure that they do not become homeless. So that's one of the key responsibilities that we have, is to ensure they have a home. And we always look for neighborhoods of opportunity. We do not want them to go in just any neighborhood. We look for neighborhoods of opportunity for the families to go into.
Thank you so much for that. Absolutely.
You're welcome.
If there are no further questions or discussion from the board, then we will move to our second discussion item, which is the FCAE survey by Andrew Kraft, our Chief Equity and Accountability Officer.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus, joined also by Val Young. This survey that we're briefing you on tonight was written by the FCAE, and our department works to process the data that they've collected. And Val, maybe, do you want to give a brief introduction on it?
Sure. Good evening, Board Chair.
Good evening.
Ms. McManus and Board Members. Usually, on the even years, the North Carolina DPI does a administer, administers a teacher working condition survey. On the odd years, FCAE administrates theirs. But the unique thing is that it's not just for teachers, it's for our education team. Our classified, our classified employees can do the survey. And the thing that we want most people to know that if you have great working conditions, that's the learning conditions in that building. So we really do look at the data to see what's going on in the school, because whatever affects our education teams inadvertently affects our students, and we want, we want the best learning conditions for our students. It's important that we know about the comments in all our schools. Educators that are in the schools, they are working hard. We've been through a pandemic, and I just want to say that I appreciate everyone that took the time to take the survey and answer those open-ended questions so that we can better understand what's going on in our schools. It is our hope that every school would do a deeper dive into their results, to see their successes, and also to look at areas that they, they can improve. So I want to thank everybody that has helped us. I want to thank Mr. Kraft's team, because they were ready for me to ask questions, and I asked a lot of questions, and I felt bad about it, but anyway, we have to do what's best. And the one thing I want to leave you with is that when you have great working conditions, you have wonderful outcomes for our students and our families.
Thanks, Val. Yeah, that's an important introduction. This is a great partnership between the district and the FCA. We're glad to partner in this way. So Val did a nice introduction in terms of the purpose of this survey, and I'll let you know that every other year, the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey is administered. So here are the questions that we can answer with the survey, and I'm going to show you the answers to these. First of all, did the staff participate, and what percentage of the staff participated? Secondly, how did they rate their school? Third, and then we break down not just their overall composite rating, but various domains, for example, climate and other domains are measured. And then we also looked at how did these ratings change between the last time this was administered in 2019 and today? And finally, and this is new this year, there's a measurement around central office departments and how those departments were rated. Let me emphasize this, there's a question we cannot answer, and that is, why did we get the results we got, right? Dr. Pratt has charged the area superintendents with going out to the schools to have that discussion with principals about, well, why do we see these results in your school? So let's start with the first question. Did staff participate in the survey? And the answer to that question is yes. We are encouraged to see high rates of participation at schools across the district. You see listed here the schools that had the highest rates of participation, but what this lets you know is the data that's collected is valid and reliable, because folks, folks did participate in this study. Secondly, how do staff rate their school? Well, sixty-two schools had a seventy-two percent or higher favorable rating as measured by the composite score. So FCAE identifies six questions that make up the composite score. That's specifically outlined in the full report that you all have access to and the public has access to. This is really encouraging, and as you're going to find out a little bit later, this is an increase. Now, why, again, we can't quite answer that question, but we're encouraged to see our teachers rating their school, their, as a composite score, very high overall. The next question is, well, how did they rate their school by domain? You see the domains that we measure here. They are climate, community support, managing students, safety, school leadership, teacher leadership, time, and then that composite score that we already discussed. Here's what I would encourage you to consider. The community support and the safety measure is not very reliable, and that's just because of how the questions performed. So I think, you know, with the FCA, they'll consider rewriting those questions. So, so, you know, ignoring or putting community support and safety off to the side, you look and you see, well, what are the other areas that got rated highly? And they are climate, which is super encouraging, as well as school leadership. What are the areas that got rated lower? They are managing students and that teacher leadership. And so the particular area that we want to pay attention to is the high school ratings of teacher leadership. For some reason, high school teachers overall said they didn't feel like they got to participate in leadership in their school, and that's something for schools to pay attention to, particularly those individual schools that had lower scores. So this is probably, to me, the most surprising result that was discovered in this study. What you see is that this year, 2021, we saw the highest rating in the composite score over the last four times that this assessment was administered. Why is that? Again, this, this, this survey does not answer the question why. There are some theories around why, but this year, this very unusual year that we're, that we're living through right now, saw the highest scores on the, on the FCAE Teacher Working Conditions Survey. That, that's interesting and was surprising to all of us. Um, that, that's interesting and was surprising to all of us. Uh, then, this was a, a request of the superintendent, um, and Dr. Pratt to say, well, let's, let's look at these, uh, individual schools and talk about the change that we've seen over time, uh, between the last time this survey was administered and this time. And, and you see that these are some fantastic increases at some schools that we've spent a lot of time targeting. Petrie, Abraham, um, are at the top, Middle College, Smith Farm. Um, sometimes we talk about has leadership changed in that building? Is that what we, is, is that the why? So we're going through that process right now, trying to answer the question, why do we see these great improvements? But, but, you know, th- this is just the list of these, uh, ten schools that saw, saw a twenty-nine percentage point increase or better. Uh, and, and we're particularly encouraged to see these increases. So another thing in the report is change, uh, on every domain. And then finally, this is a new part of the, uh, survey that, that wasn't included before. And, and so what you can see here, uh, some questions surrounding, uh, human resources, payroll, finance department, technology, EC, instructional services, and superintendent's office. And we rated them based on, on the percent of favorable responses that we got. Uh, there's, there's a couple of things to pay attention to here. Um, you know, I think Kevin and his team can be very encouraged by the favorable rating that they got. Uh, and then we look at the superintendent's office and we say, why do we see these lower ratings? Let me point out a couple of things. One is the N, right? So this question was targeted at folks that, that contacted that department. So it's not unusual for a teacher to have a laptop that doesn't work for one reason or another and they contact technology and technology can fix that problem for them very quickly. And you see seventeen, over seventeen hundred teachers said they did that and most of them, ninety-five percent, got favorable responses. But only a hundred and fifty or sixty, uh, teachers contact the superintendent. So that is not the superintendent. That is everybody in the superintendent, the deputy, the area superintendents, and everyone else. And we recognize that they're going to be fixing much more complex problems when they call the superintendent's office than perhaps I just need my laptop fixed, right? So understand that, that, you know, the comparison that's being made there is, is a little more nuanced than the numbers might, might indicate. Okay, so these are all of the, uh, components of the FCAE survey. All of you board members have access to this. The public has access to this. Uh, and you can peruse all of these various, uh, areas that were measured by the FCA survey. Are there questions? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So even with the low number, we're going to be better in that last column next year. Just so you know.
I, I knew Ms. McManus was going to say that. I was counting down.
Even if it's a hundred and sixty-nine of you, we're going to have a hundred percent. I'm going to compete with Kevin.
Ms. McManus has ways to go to catch up to you, Kevin, so it's all good, though. Next, we have the Meadowlock Campus Traffic Renovations by Colleen Moore, our Director of Facility Planning and Construction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. McManus, and other board members. I told you at the May eleventh meeting, I introduced you to the Meadowlock, Meadowlock traffic renovations that we were doing and told you we were having bids due on May thirteenth and we'd be bringing some information back to you at tonight's meeting. So we did, and then we also, I think, told you at that meeting, we had a project budget of about one point eight million is what the, uh, the bond had set aside for those traffic improvements. Um, that one point eight million includes things such as design, utility modifications we'll have to do, construction permitting costs, testing, traffic control, striping, signs, things like that. So, uh, we did, we did not receive enough bids, excuse me, on May thirteenth to open, um, the bid. So by law, we had to wait seven days, re-advertise, and advertise again. And then so we, we re-advertised for May twentieth, got, we actually had four bids, um, come in. So you can see on the screen and you've got attached in your document that bar construction was the apparent, was the low bidder when you add alternates one and alternate two to the project, of which we wanted to do. So our recommendation tonight is that you, um, um, approve the project amount, uh, the budgeted project amount and award, allow us to award a contract to bar construction for six, I think it's six hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars. Are there any questions? Good. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Cole. I did have, sorry. So you're just going to do the, the, the base bid and the second alternate, not the, not both?
We, we were taking the alternate one and alternate two.
Okay, so then it wouldn't be, would it be the six hundred seventy-seven or would it be the eight hundred and seventy-six?
Um, so yeah, so these, this should be a, no, that's a deduct of, so it's the seven oh five, uh, the seven oh five plus the one ninety-eight with a, with a, with a deduct of twenty-seven thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The next item for discussion is the appointment to the Forsyth Technical Community College Board of Trustees, which tonight, um, Dr. James D. Branch is before the board for, um, consideration. Information was previously sent to the board member about, um, this appointee and we were given an opportunity to ask questions or raise any concerns about the recommended appointee that comes from, um, the president of Forsyth Tech and, and the board as, um, a recommendation. I do think that Board Member Jones may have some personal, well, I don't want to say personal, professional, um, um, experiences with Dr. Branch by way of her, um, placement on the Forsyth Tech Community College Board of Trustees previously. And I would ask if she would, you know, share any information she think is relevant.
Uh, I, um, so I, I, I believe, well, um, having served on the Forsyth Tech Board, in the past, I know that there's a great deal of thought that goes into, um, the, the members, um, much like we talked about today. Sometimes a board knows exactly what, what they need, uh, when filling, um, spots and, and vacancies and especially in this. So I give a lot of, um, respect to, um, the process that the Forsyth Tech Board goes through in their nominations committee and hope that entities like ourselves and county commissioners and others would abide by the recommendation that the board gives.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns about the appointment of Dr. James D. Branch? Okay. The next item is to, um, renew the contract for, with Discovery Education by Nicolette Grant, our Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members. I'm Ms. McManus. Um, before I mention our Discovery Education renewal, I need to apologize and admit that I need to wear glasses now and I left off one of the names of the science fair winners. If I can take personal privilege to read the last name?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have to wear glasses. I was trying not to, but it's my age now. Um, so I'd like to apologize and to recognize Christopher Birch from Haynes Magnet, um, Middle School, who was the recipient of the North Carolina Science, Math, and Technology Education Promising Young Research Award and had the project of high-speed travel in a vacuum tube. So, uh, Christopher, please apologize. Thank you. So for our Discovery Education, uh, contract, we're, we're asking to renew our contract for another year, uh, at the cost of six hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Our contract includes our K-five science, six twelve social studies resources, techbooks, math for high school, as well as social emotional learning, uh, components and content. Um, so we've, uh, greatly benefited from this resource and want to continue the renewal of this contract in partnership with Discovery Education. Um, and it is one of our resources that are included in our unit plan organizers as part of our guaranteed viable, uh, curriculum. Any questions about the request to renew?
I think Boarder McCrally has a question.
Yeah, um, do we have any data on how much this program is used? Because I get mixed reviews of it all the time where people, where teachers say they don't use it at all. Um, and I just wonder what, what the data shows.
Yes, um, we do have some usage data. Uh, we have about thirty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven students that are using Discovery Education, about thirty thousand, two hundred, thirty-one teachers that have used it. And they're able to embed the Discovery Education resources directly into Canvas for the students. And this was a great resource, especially as we were remote for so many, um, months. But we do have, uh, great usage in the grade levels that we're asking to renew the contract for.
I have a question too. Um, so this is the same contract. We're not adding to the contract or deleting anything. We're going to go with what we have been using in the past.
Correct. There have been no changes to what we have this year.
I think Board Member McCrally raises a, a good point. And in my mind, as a board member, um, I personally like Discovery Education as, um, an instructional tool. But I would be interested to know by way of the teachers if we could, you know, gather data from them in addition to the usage report, you know, how, um, you know, what their professional recommendation is around, um, some of these resources too.
Thank you. We'll take that to, um, our content directors. Um, I do know that they're including the, the robust, um, assessment bill. That's rain on top of us right now, but it scared us all. Um, and that it's, uh, integral in our, um, social studies units. But we'll take that to our content team to get some more feedback from teachers. Any other questions about Discovery Education? All right. And then the second item, if I can move to the second?
Yes, please do.
Um, we are asking for our requests to approve a contract with Letters. Um, Letters is one of the, um, vendors that the Department of Public Instruction, um, is reaching out to support our Senate Bill three eighty-seven around the science of reading, uh, training for teachers. And this contract, we are asking for a partnership with, um, Read, Write, Spell. It's going to try to raise the money for us to get the funding for this particular contract to train our central office literacy team on this Letters, um, training and the Letters resources so that when the state rolls out this training for teachers, all pre-K-three teachers, we have a team that is ready, has gone through the training and can build, uh, capacity of our, our staff to support teachers when they go through this training. So that is for two hun- uh, twenty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars, which would not come from school funds, which would come from Read, Write, Spell. I think the rain is louder than me.
Um, Ms. Grant, I wonder if there could be some consideration for any of the board members that would like to participate in the Letters training? Um, I, I know that some of our board members have been very diligent this year in trying to, um, volunteer at schools, um, to help teachers out. And I think if we are empowered with, um, Letters training, I think, you know, that would just be something else to make us that much more intentional around when we decide that we want to go in and, um, I guess, kind of sub, especially at the elementary level.
Okay, so I'll, I'll share that with Stephanie Ward, who is our Director of ELA. Um, it's a six module, uh, course that's, um, dovetails well with the reading research, the classroom practice training. When we go through the teacher level, um, training, we'll, I'll ask her to include you in that group. If that's okay?
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I just, I just wanted to say that I, I love Letters training, so I'm, I'm super excited about this. I think it's going to be fantastic.
It, it is. We're very excited as well.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Oh, I have a quick. So, so when we, it does roll out for teachers. How will that be funded? Will that be funded by the state or with the?
Yes.
Okay.
So as part of this Senate bill, the state will be providing the funding for training every pre-K-three teacher in the state on Letters training. And that will be paid for by DPI. This request is to get one of our community partners to help us get trained before, um, our teachers.
I think that's a great idea. I just wanted to clarify that the state was going to pay for the teacher's training, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is our SRO contract by Jonathan Wilson, um, our Security Director.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Superintendent McManus, and Board. If, if, if Nicolette's going to apologize for wearing glasses, I've got a lot of apologies. Uh, tonight I've got the opportunity to present the SRO, uh, contract for the coming school year. Uh, as you know, we've always, we've been in partners with the Winston, with Winston Police Department for a, a few years and they, this is, they are now out of the SRO program completely. So two contracts for you tonight. One with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. We've been partners with Forsyth County Sheriff's Office since two thousand and nine. The coming year, we'll have twenty-nine SROs, three corporals, three sergeants, one lieutenant, and one captain. That's going to serve thirteen middle schools, twelve high schools, all the, all the schools that are in the county, middle and high, with the exception of those that are in the, uh, city limits of Kernersville. This will include, uh, to begin with, twenty-four assigned SROs and five roving officers. Those, one of those roving officers will be assigned to Main Street at the point that we ask for that, uh, officer to be reassigned. Because when Main Street starts up, there's very few students in there, but at some point we need to assign an SRO there. The price for the coming year is three million, five hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred seventy-four. And that reflects the cost that Winston-Salem and Forsyth County Sheriff's Office combined together, uh, for this coming year. The Kernersville Police Department, there's no change in their cost. It remains five hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-three. We've been partners with Kernersville Police Department since two thousand and eight. That is for five SROs and one sergeant. Again, they serve the three middle schools in the city limits of Kernersville along with East Forsyth High School. And Kernersville also provides one additional roving officer to assist with those schools. So we're back, basically back to our pre-COVID, um, duties and responsibilities with one officer per school. But now with the roving officers with the sheriff's office, uh, we have the ability to move resources where needed, except for that one position where we're going to move one of the rovers into Main Street. It gives additional, uh, resources at schools that may have an additional need on a particular day. So just to, uh, we've clarified in the program, basically three, um, uh, points that we're going to focus on. What is the triad model? At our SR model, we consist of law enforcement, security, law-related student counseling, and law-related education. SROs and school law enforcement, SROs and school law enforcement relationships are the first line of prevention and security, not punitive in nature. And in general, Winston Forsyth County personnel, uh, Winston Forsyth County School Personnel will handle school disciplinary matters that are not criminal in nature and SROs will handle matters that are criminal in nature only. Uh, and we've just kind of added some new language, uh, that we haven't had in the past as far as educate, education with students, counseling, and individual group discussions. So SROs will have more interaction with students in, in those type of settings. So, uh, in, in line with our strategic goal, number five, to foster an inclusive, uh, climate to value the safety and the well-being of all students, faculty, and staff, uh, we, I would recommend that you approve both contracts, um, for the coming school year. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So with the, the new language on what is expected of SROs changing a little bit, will there be some training for, for that? Because I know probably we'll have some SROs that have been SROs at schools before. We have training so that they, they understand the kind of delineation between what, what their job is and what school personnel job is?
Yes, ma'am. I think it's on August the eleventh. We have it set. I believe that's the date. We're going to have in this very room, uh, all the SROs, all the SRO leadership, uh, school, uh, district office leadership and all the principals, uh, so that we can kind of get everybody on the same page. Everybody knows what the contract says. Everybody understands what their duties are and what the other ones' duties are. Yes, ma'am.
So I know that, like, in conversations, like, I, I sit on the School Justice Partnership and we, we've been for like two and a half years, been having conversations about, as we're kind of moving forward and the district is now moving forward with partnering with, I forget the name of the, the group that we just approved the contract for, but you know what I'm talking about. I think that I've heard some, sometimes that there, there's a difference, like an officer has a duty, right? So when an officer sees criminal activity, like, they have a responsibility to act, right? But then a lot of times, you know, it, it's a little bit different than that of a principals. I just want to make sure that, my concern is that officers being sort of bound by law to do, to, to engage with certain things. I think when, when I've had conversations with principals and in some of the spaces I've been in, we just want to be kind of clear about what we're doing and what situation and making sure that we're consistent across the board because I know that we've had, we've had issues with that, right? And I know that in the, the actual contract itself, it speaks to that a little bit, but I know that as things are developing, as we're trying to develop our practices and make changes relative to our own policies, that I just want to make sure that we are including the SROs in that and having those conversations so that, you know, nobody's surprised and so we can all kind of get on the same page. It sounds like that training in August is sort of what, what the purpose of that is going to be for, but I just want to make sure that we're continuing to do that.
Yes, sir. And I've had, uh, a lot of discussions with Lieutenant Mathia, with the Sheriff's Office, and Lieutenant Meritz with the Kernersville Police Department. So what we want to make sure is that, that we are handling school discipline and we're not putting officers in a position where that we are handling school discipline, and we're not putting officers in a position where they have to act. So, you know, we don't call an officer when we don't need to. Thank you.
Thank you. The last discussion item is our policy 3250.2, student fees by Deion Jenkins, our General Counsel.
Madam Chair, if I may, I believe Mr. Moore wants to come back up to correct one of the figures that he provided in his presentation earlier about metal arc.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, thank you Ms. Jenkins, I did, Mr. Mahan's question didn't make me look. So the figures, the numbers were right, were correct on the bid tab, Kevin, I don't know if you could pull that back up, Mr. Sherrill, but those numbers were correct, I just, we transposed the wrong number onto the recommendation. So the recommendation should say that we want to accept the bid, the base bid plus one, plus two, but we pulled the number out of the wrong column, the contract amount would be 876,399, and not the 677 number, so went back after you said something, and I wanted to correct that recommendation. Any questions, is that a confusion?
So, it was what I thought it was.
Yeah, it was, yes, it is one plus two, which is the question you asked, but it did have the wrong number transposed, so thank you.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Superintendent McManus. I will just provide you all another brief update regarding changes to the student fee policy in light of the discussion at the work session earlier this month. I will not go through all the various fees, but I did wanna highlight two things. Based on your feedback, the committee reconvened and made some changes in its recommendation to the student parking fees. The recommendation was to keep the automobile registration fee to $10 at the homeschool, $10 at Career Center, but to reduce the overall motor vehicle parking fee to $40, and $15 if you qualify for free and reduced lunch. And then overall, the maximum that any student will pay is $50 for parking. So I wanted to point that out for you. The second note I wanted to make is one that we actually did not get a chance to point out last time. There are, you know, obviously changes in some of the program fees and things, but there's one new fee that's being added to this policy, and that's the technology fee. You've heard a lot from Mr. Sherrill and other folks in his team about our push to have one-to-one devices in our district, and the efforts to provide more technology access for our students. But with that comes a need to support the regular repairs and maintenance on those devices. And so we are proposing a technology use fee of $20, and this is a fee that would apply to any student who receives a Chromebook, and the those fees would go towards deferring some of the costs for having to repair and maintain those devices as they come in, and Mr. Sherrill could give you more information about actually the number of repairs and the number of devices that actually have to be repaired on a regular basis. And then, of course, the replacement fees, they're not necessarily new fees, those fees already were there, they just were not in the policy. And so these fees actually reflect the actual cost of replacing these items, the Chromebook, the charger, and the carrying case. And at the previous meeting, you approved the purchase of various carrying cases, hopefully to help minimize damage to the Chromebook devices. So with that, I'll yield the floor for any questions.
Is that fee an annual fee or a one-time fee?
The $20 fee would be an annual fee.
And besides that fee, you've got $10, is that the free and reduced lunch?
Yes ma'am, that's the free and reduced lunch fee.
Okay.
So, does that? I understand, so help me, well, help me understand exactly what the technology fee goes toward, I mean, we're paying staff, I mean, their salaries to repair, so is this like little buttons and parts and things?
Yeah, I can speak to that, the technology fee, not only will it support the one-to-one program, but but it's primarily for breaks and damages that aren't covered under our one-year warranty for the Chromebook. So if you break a screen, it's normally $80 to replace that. Keyboards, about $65, that doesn't include the soft cost of our labor for our technicians to make those repairs. So, this would give a sustainable revenue stream for hardware repairs for the 50,000 Chromebooks that we're gonna put out on an annual basis for things that are not covered under standard warranty and breakage, so accidental damage, repeat accidental damage coverage, that kind of thing. The intent is to not charge for those damages, so a kid brings in a cracked screen, if the fee had been paid for the $20 or the $10, then we would repair it and not assess that charge. The other charges you see there are for total loss or stolen. So, that's the replacement charges that we would assess those students for that. Now, obviously, if the Board elects not to approve fee, a lot of districts do this a lot of different ways, many districts have a $50 technology use fee, other districts don't have a fee at all, so it's all over the map about how districts support one-to-one programs in their counties. So if the Board's pleasure is to not do this, we obviously will find another way, that's what we do, we'll find another way. But this was just in an effort to help minimize the cost, and if you think about, let's just say, $10 for 50,000 students, that's a half a million that we can put back into our repair budget to sustain the program on an annual basis, and that was, obviously that was just based on $10. So, again, this is a proposal for us to have some revenue stream to help with the repair costs that we're gonna incur with that many devices out there on a daily basis. But, if there are other ideas and there's other conversations you wanna have, we're really just bringing this as a proposal tonight to see where we can go with this, and have the best solution possible for our support. So it has nothing to do with, you know, salaries, it's all about repair costs and parts and labor, not labor, but parts.
Just parts, I just, and I appreciate that, and I know that this is, you know, definitely an undertaking, and things are gonna be damaged, and so it's gonna be much nicer if something's damaged and we can just repair it and not have to try to assess those things, but you know, I, I know that, by the, I mean, so, every year, you know, at $20 and $10 per child that you have in the school district, you know, that can, that can really add up for families. So I'm just concerned about the, if we, you know, if we feel like we have to do that, then that amount, for sure. And maybe, you know, 10 and 5 would be, I don't even, I don't even know if, you know, if I have you know, four or five kids, four children, I mean, you could have one in, you know, elementary, middle, and high, and at $20 apiece, that's just a lot of money to come right out, especially I would assume it would be collected at the beginning of the year, and that's when everything else is collected, and so we send all the forms home and then say, your child's attending a public school, but you have to pay for all of this, so I just, I don't really know that I.
I don't disagree with that logic, I don't disagree at all. What, if we don't approve a fee, we'll find another way, but we'll be in a situation where, let's say those five kids, all five of them break their Chromebook, and then we try to assess a charge of $80 per, which they're not gonna pay, we just gotta be prepared to absorb that cost and find another way to sustain the program. And we're working with Andrea, I mean, Andrea's behind the fee, she wants us to have that fee to help with that, but that's not to say that we can't find another solution.
And I really do understand that, and I know that we have to do things, but if it was more of a you know, a five or a $10 fee that could, you know, I also wonder if, you know, in that first year of kind of rolling and implementing, I'm assuming if they don't pay, they still get the Chromebook.
Well, that's to be.
I mean, if we're gonna be a one-on-one device, a district, I don't, I just don't want it to be punitive.
No, we were definitely gonna give them the, I'm sorry to interrupt, did you definitely give them the Chromebook? If they don't pay their student fee, if we approve it, then we would try to assess a damage charge if they damaged it, because that was.
Right. Yeah, I just don't want it to be something that's of a punitive nature, I think if if it could be lower, for sure, or just, you know, $5 across the board, or, I don't know.
Or, or just, you know, just in conversation here, if we don't, if we don't charge a fee at all, then we just do our best to assess those damage fees and collect when damages do happen. And of course, you'll have those students that take complete care of their device, they don't have any damage. And then you'll have that one, you'll have those students that break everyone you give them, and that's just what's gonna happen, because we've seen it, you know, we're replacing 30 to 40 a day right now that are coming in broken. So we've got, we know what's happening out there, but I guess I'm on both sides of the fence, Ms. Jones, and just to know exactly what's best for us, and and maybe we use this first year to have an assessment of, you know, what did this first year look like? If we did a $5 fee, did it sustain us, or we did no fee, do we need to do something different the next year based on what we learned in this true one-to-one distribution? I really hope our cases that we're gonna put these devices in will help us with some of these breaks. A lot of the breaks are just drops on school buses, sidewalks, all those things that are happening. And so I think the protective cases will push us to a different level of support, so I just appreciate your consideration, and let's just, I think if you can just mull it over and think through what's best, and we'll make the best decision together.
Board Member Brainerd?
I have just two quick ones, one, do we know the percentage of people that are using the Chromebook one-on-one versus people that are actually using their own devices?
Don't know that percentage right now, all I do know is that we have roughly 40,000 that are out in the field now that we're starting to collect back, so through the COVID closure, 40,000 students did take one of our devices, so which tells you, you know, there's 15,000 kids that did not. But that will maybe look different in the fall, we are gonna allow kids to opt out if they wanna use their own device, they don't have to take our device, they don't have to be responsible for that. So that percentage would be something interesting to see in a non-COVID year, what that looks like.
And my second thing is this AP fees, these large AP fees. I'm looking at the graphing calculator especially, this could break a kid from taking APs, and APs are already underused in certain schools, so I'm very concerned about the cost of the AP piece.
You're talking about AP tests, I assume, right?
Are you talking about?
The fees right here, AP calculus, chemistry, the graphing calculator, $110.
So that is the actual, it's my understanding that is the actual cost of?
Actually, it is, because I, I own one, it is the cost, but my concern is that there's no way some high impoverished students can afford that fee for that calculator. Do we have them, that we can keep them in the school, and they maintain them at the school so that we don't charge them that fee, I don't wanna discourage people from taking AP courses just because they don't have the money for that graphing calculator.
So that's certainly something we can look at, I know that for these fees in particular, they, the items that are purchased do become personal property at the end of that, and because there's limitations on what some of the CTE funds can be used for, but we can certainly look at that. And there were decreases in some of the other AP fees as well, I just wanted to note that. I also wanted to clarify that tonight is not the final approval of the policy, this is the first reading, so it will go out for public comment, and we will bring it back to you for Policy Committee in June for additional discussion, so this is not, this is not the final version of the policy.
Board Member Parker, did you have a question?
Yeah, this year, Mr. Sherrill, did we assess people when they had a problem with their Chromebook that came in repairs or anything?
This year with our COVID shutdown, we did not charge any families or students for damages. We are trying to charge for total loss, or stolen, we call it loss or stolen. So as these devices start coming back in, if students don't return them, we do try, we are gonna invoice them for the device, but as long as they return something damaged, working, we're not gonna charge any damage fees based on the year that we've been through. And my rationale on that is that we, we had to give students devices for Zoom and Teams and to get online, and so some students, their hand was forced to take it, so where they may have opted out, if they had more time to secure their own device, but we're trying our best to recoup some of the total loss fees on these devices as they come back in.
Thank you.
Kevin, can we use that as a benchmark?
Yeah, it might be good, set a good baseline with that, see what we look like as they come in, and see what that.
I mean, I would think that might be higher, just as you said, we had to move it out, and, you know, in a normal year, families may just decide that they were gonna provide that themselves, but maybe we could look at what that looks like, and better help us understand what we need to do move from forward.
With the fees.
Absolutely, and I will know those numbers late June, once we get everything collected, and maybe it'll bring you some baseline data back on that.
Thank you.
Sounds like a great idea.
I think Board Member Bohannon, and then I'll get to Board Member Parker.
I'll let Ms. Parker go.
I was just gonna say, so, so Virtual Academy, we will be offering those to all those students if they want them, correct?
We're offering to all students, Virtual Academy or not, but obviously, obviously Virtual Academy, yes.
But Virtual Academy will have to have them, obviously, so, but our other students, they would be in addition to their, I mean, they'll need them at school, correct?
Well, there's no really, there's really no difference between Virtual Academy or traditional school with this offer, it's if you want to accept our one-to-one Chromebook device, you can do so, if you're in Virtual Academy, you can use your own machine as well, if you don't wanna accept the device.
And they would have the option, if they are not in Virtual Academy and they're traditional, of taking this Chromebook home as well, correct, at night? Not, they wouldn't have to leave them at school like we did before.
This program is completely a take-home program for all students that wish to be in the program, except for K2, we're not issuing to K2, as I shared in the presentation a couple weeks ago, K2 will use devices at school.
Kevin, do you have a figure right now of how much it's gonna cost per year to maintain the program?
Just to, for the lifecycle program, to purchase the new devices, to keep them on the four-year lifecycle, is 3.52 million.
Per year?
13,500 devices each year, they go into our third grade, our sixth grade, and our ninth graders. Every year, those are the grade levels that get the new device, and they keep them on the three-year, three-year, and four-year schedule. So three through five, six through eight, nine through 12, you get a new device third, sixth, and ninth.
Right.
On the three.
So you said it's $3 million, three?
3.52 million.
Okay, so, this money from the fee is for repair, is, you wanted to utilize it for repairs?
We have a one-year warranty on our devices, we could've put a three or four-year on it, it would've been, then that number would've been five and six million a year. So the idea with the fee is to put that roughly $300,000 to $600,000 back into the repair budget to purchase those screens and those keyboards and those things to maintain the breaks and damages and not push those costs to the families when it's, you know, a $60 screen as opposed to a $10 technology fee. But, you know, maybe there's some options to look at it as you pay on your third, sixth, and ninth, and you do it over, you don't pay every year, maybe there's some compromise there that we could look at too, to where it's not annual, it's when you receive your new device on that schedule, could be a possibility, but then you gotta deal with kids coming in at different times, you have them, you know, different districts coming in seventh grade and eighth grade, so I'm talking.
Because I guess if I'm thinking about it, like, I understand that the why $20 might be a little bit too high of a price point for some people, given all of the other things they have to pay for, but let's say if you did $20, and 35,000 students utilize the program, that would be $700,000 per year, if it was $10, it would be 350, something like that?
Right.
I'm, you know, what are you, the, it's hard to kind of ballpark what the need is, but like, is that if it was $10, could you get by with the, and that's if 35, I took the 35,000 number, because I'm like, everybody's probably not gonna, you know.
Right, not all gonna pay, right? I think that this is so new to us, this is our first year, I don't know, I'm with you, I'm just not sure how much damage and break that we're gonna have to repair based on the cases and the new devices and how many fees we collect, so I think it's gonna be a learning experience for all of us to have, we really wanna manage this from a technical and a financial standpoint to where it's an instructional program, and we're not worried about those things. I wanna take the technology and the financial piece away from the instruction, because I want it to be an instructional tool, that's what this is all about. So I think there's a lot for us to learn in this first year, so I think my recommendation is this, is that we've got a proposed fee, let's get the feedback, and I think it'll probably be a lot of pros and cons, that's probably what the communities may see on that. And then maybe we come back to the Board and say, look, this is where we can go, let's go this way first year, and evaluate after year one, and if it's no fee, and we say, wait, we really should've done a fee, then we can come back the following year and implement, or if we do a fee and say, well, hey, we got $500,000 that came in on a fee, we didn't need but 250, and then we can think about maybe making a compromise and adjustment in year two. And that's maybe the only way to look at it, knowing that this is a brand-new initiative for us.
So, Kevin, I think that, I've seen a model where, because if a child intentionally, you know, damages a device, then the parent is held responsible, you know, for it, so parents were given the option to pay for insurance.
Right.
And that became a very, you know, significant, I think, response by parents, because they know their. And that became, um, a very, you know, significant, um, I think, response by parents, because they know they're a child. And so we may be able to capture, you know, more dollars than not, because right now, there's, you know, maybe not even a strong request of parents as a consideration of paying $80 later, $10 now, um, and see kind of maybe what that could yield, just as a consideration.
Great point. And I guess my last thought, and I don't mean to monopolize the time, is that we've, we've set the precedent that we're not going to charge you anything. You break it three or four times, bring it back, we're going to give you another one. That's what this year has been. That's what we've had to do this year to support our families. So this is going to be a change. It is probably going to be a bumpy change for parents if we implement the fee. I'll just be honest, because we have just taken care of everything this year at a pretty large cost to the district, and that that cost is probably going to really show itself in the next month as we recollect these 40,000 that are out there. Because right now, I know what's out there, I know where they are, I know which kids have them, I just don't know what's going to come back, and in what shape it's going to be. We don't know. They've been out there for 14, almost 15 months. And so it's just been that kind of year, and that we've got to recover from that, put this strong program in place with new guidelines and new accountability measures in, in place for, for the devices, and move forward. Because I want our kids to have these devices, they need these devices, but we cannot keep doing business the way this year's been. There's no way we can sustain that. Let's just be honest.
Um, isn't this something that our SRO funds could cover then? I mean, I would think technology would be right at the top of the list.
We have in our SRO budget, we put in 150,000 for repair parts, and that's one of the budget items that we're getting community forum feedback on now. So if we were to elect to do the fee, we would probably take that line item out. But yes, great point, we could leave it in there, but that's not sustainable long-term, but it is sustainable for the next three years. And then we could, we could, we could do that as, as a, as a, as an alternative for, for three years at least while SRO's around.
Okay, and I'd also like to address the, um, the athletic admission fees, and.
Oh, good, something besides Chromebooks, I'm good with that.
Yeah, it, it looks, I mean, it, it looks like some of them have been reduced, and I appreciate that, but, you know, there are just so many students out there that they didn't have the $7, and they're not going to have the $5 either. And, and it really bothers me because it keeps them from participating, um, in the high school experience. And, and I think that's problematic. And some of these, some of these sports that we're charging for, it's probably even with how many people are coming to pay versus how much you're paying that person to sit at the gate and collect money. So I think we really need to take another look at that.
Okay.
And Deion, just question about, well, are you going to respond to Board Member Crowley's point?
Oh, I, I was just going to say, that's, I, we appreciate that feedback, and we'll, we'll take all the feedback from today and, and, um, take another look at this. And again, the, the action for tonight is just to put it out for public comment. It's not saying you necessarily are okay with this version of the policy, but just to go out and, and get public comment and post it for seven days. But we certainly will have another opportunity to talk about that at our next work session.
The question I have is around the motor vehicle parking fee. Is there a discount for staff children?
Yes, there is already in the policy a discount for staff children.
What is, what is that?
Don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure that there's no fee for the children of staff, um, as well as there, there's other discounts that are afforded for students as well. But I don't recall it off the top of my head, so I'll make sure to get that to you.
Thank you.
I think that there are no more questions. Thank you, Deion.
Thank you.
The next action item is, not action, the next item on the agenda is the action items. The first action item is to consider approval of the Metallock project as budgeted and approved, um, the execution of a contract with Barr Construction.
Move to approve.
Second.
If there are no question or discussion, I'll approve. I think that's unanimous, Deion. The second item is to consider approval of appointment to the Forsyth Technical Community College Board of Trustees, Dr. Branch.
Move approval, second.
If there are no further question or discussion, um, please raise your hand, all that approve. I think that's unanimous too, Deion. Um, the next item is to consider approval of the renewal contract with Discovery Education.
Move approval.
Second.
If there are no further question or discussion, all approve, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, we got two opposed, Deion. So that's the majority for tonight, okay. The next, um, item for consideration is to consider approval of the letters contract.
Move to approve.
Second. If there are no further question or discussion, please raise your hand, all those who approve. It looks like, you raise your hand?
I'll, I'll be upstanding.
Okay.
I'll sit on the board for the last bit.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next item for consideration is to consider approval of the SRO contract. If there are no question or discussion, all those approve, please raise your hand. All right, I think all of our, that was unanimous too. All right, the next item is to consider approval of policy 3250.2 student fees.
I thought we weren't voting.
I thought we weren't voting on that.
I thought that comes back. We just put it out for the public comments.
Oh, okay.
It's for public comments.
So we would put it out as is tonight, not with any of the recommendations we talked about?
Yeah, for public comments.
We'll, we'll take all your feedback now, but, um, I can put it out including the way it is, but I'll make note of your feedback for the next time.
Yeah.
Unreadiness, so we can change, but when we revisit it, we can, when you come back, we can incorporate that feedback. So putting it out for public comment just allows the public to comment on it, to provide feedback. We still can make changes. Yeah, okay.
Will you conclude our comments when you put it out for public comment, or?
I can, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I, I will do that, if that's what, if that's what you, if that's what those were, I will do the comments.
Or at least even the areas that we, we felt were maybe in question. I mean, you don't have to put our, all our individual comments, I wouldn't think, but.
But I, yeah, I just am concerned that what gets put out there looks like it's being endorsed by the board, and it's what we want, if it's not quite there yet.
Can, can we table that for later, or is that something we have to do tonight?
I think we need public comment, just to know what the public feels, and how many, I mean, if a lot of people come back and say they can't afford it, they can't, this is going to block them, then we know we have a real situation.
So just to kind of bring it back to, um, order, I don't think there was a motion, we just kind of went into some questions. So right now, um, is there a motion to approve the policy 3250.2?
I can make a motion to put it out for public comment.
I, I don't think that that's the.
That, that's the intent.
Okay, that's the intent, okay. So the motion is to consider approval, um, to bring to public comment policy 3250.2, just to clarify the, um, motion.
And we're not voting on it?
Not voting on it, just public comment.
Okay, so I'll second that.
I motion just for public comment.
Okay.
Any question or discussion, further question or discussion?
Do we need, do we have to have an amendment to include the board comments?
I, I can do that, I, I, I will.
You'll amend that, okay, all right, I'm good with it.
Can you just put areas of concern that the board had?
Yes, I will explain that in the closing remarks.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's important.
Raise your hand for all those who approve. All right, I think that was unanimous, um, Deion. The next item is to consider approval of purchase protective Chromebook cases for the one-to-one program.
Some out.
Second.
If there are no question or discussion, please raise your hand, all those approve. That's unanimous. The next item is to consider approval of budget amendment number four and transfer number four.
Some out.
Second.
You all are like soul brother and sister tonight, reading each other mind. So if there are no further question or discussion, all approve. That's unanimous. Um, the next item is to consider approval of the North Forsyth High School construction drawings.
Move approval, second.
There are no further question or discussion, all approve. That's unanimous, Deion. The next item is to consider approval of the alternative accountability model.
Move approval.
Or second.
If there are no further, um, question or discussion, raise your hand for approval.
Any opposed?
I think Board Member Parker, did you raise your hand for approval? Okay, um, so that was unanimous. Um, the last item is to consider approval of update to policy 5123, promotion and retention, and AR 5123.
Move approval, second.
Any, if there are no further question or discussion, all those approve, please raise your hand. That's unanimous, Deion, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the items?
So move, second.
There are no question or discussion, raise your hand, all those approve. Okay, that's unanimous, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's update and board announcements. First, we'll have the superintendent's update.
I'm going to stay here to do that, and I'm going to have Kevin scroll through it. I have a very quick update. Um, first and foremost, um, I wanted to thank, because I didn't have a chance while they were all here, but all of our students and coaches and teachers that were here earlier, um, you know, extracurricular, on-court classes, and all those, those, those opportunities kids have are so important to their overall school experience. And so thank you to all of our teachers and coaches and staff that support our students, and our, our parents as well. So here is our data from, that we report to the ABC Collaborative. This is what I'll be sharing with you each, um, month, now that we're reporting this regularly with Duke ABC Collaborative. It just keeps you up to date on what are confirmed cases that folks report to us, and what are possible secondary cases based on our contact tracing. All right, vaccinations, we held four clinics in our own schools last week. Thank you to the Health Department and to our staff, and to the staffs at these schools, at our schools for hosting these. And so you can see the numbers of students that were vaccinated and adults, um, and, and all students had parent permission. Masking guidelines, as everyone knows, we are still held to masking guidelines in our schools and in our school buildings. Um, and so that's why we're all still wearing them, and that our students are still wearing masks. If something changes over the summer or going into next year by our governor and in the toolkit, we will move forward based on, based on our guidance. All right, summer programming, last time I reported to you, I think we were at about a little over 3,000 students. We said the goal was 15,000. Total enrolled for summer this, at this point, is 7,262 students. So, uh, thank you for all of our students that have registered and families that have registered. We're still looking for a few more teachers, a little bit more than a few more teachers, but if anybody else wants to join summer, summer, uh, teaching, let us know. All right, testing update, EOGs began today, so hopefully everyone, uh, you know, good luck to all our students, and not that you need luck, this is a chance to demonstrate your learning, and we know you're prepared. Teachers have prepared you, so they begin this week, and, uh, will continue for the next two weeks of school, last two weeks. Uh, I know a few board members asked me about a Haynes Park update. Darrell has received what he requested around the flood report, and he is going to be having someone work to interpret that. And we'll have information at the work session on June 8th related to that. Yes?
Yeah, is, we talked about a plan for how to move forward with this. Um, you know, one of the things Coach Brown from Mount Tabor said tonight, when, in his opening remarks, was he, first he thanked the board for allowing students to participate in athletics despite a pandemic. But then something that really resonated with me is he said, "Thank you for giving us everything we need." And that includes a practice field and an on-campus facility for their teams to participate, which Mount Tabor has and which most high schools have. And it's directly related to this issue of the use of Haynes Park for Wiley Middle School and for Reynolds High School. So while I appreciate that we've got the flood study, I think what we had asked for was what's the plan for how we're going to?
The updates and, and the upgrades and all of that within the park, the rest of that, okay.
Just making sure that, that both entities are living up to their, to the agreement.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the agreement clearly stated in there that, you know, so-called improvements can't be made in the park if they impede or interfere with the school programs in the park.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So Darrell, that, I know you're in here, well, that'll be part of the update, June 8th. Okay. Thank you for that. And then also, Monday, as everyone knows, is Memorial Day. So for anyone who has family members, relatives who have, uh, lost their lives serving in our military, happy Memorial Day, everyone, and, um, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McManus. We do have a couple of announcements. Tuesday, June 8th is the last day of school for students. Um, and also, um, June 8th at 5:30 PM, our, um, board would have, will have its work session meeting. The next item on the agenda is the, um, open comments period. Um, before we begin the section of our meeting in which anyone can comment on anything respective to, you know, what's respectful, we say good night to all of our viewers on Cable 2, and thank you for watching. And that will conclude our broadcast. At this time, we open up our meeting to the public, um, for open public comments. Again, please direct your comments to only myself as the.
Thank you for joining us on Your School Channel, Cable 2. I know that, um, the choice program is in public discussion right now, but I just want to, first of all, come out and say that I am not in favor in a perfect world of school choice. The reason being, there should not be a school that is neglected, low-performing, whatever you want to call those schools, where students are not achieving successful education currently. However, it's not a perfect world, and it is obvious that we have schools who are doing our students severe injustice in the quality of education they are delivering. That said, I believe it is absolutely necessary that the parents of those children be given an opportunity to transfer their students to a school that is doing a better job until such time as we as a district can bring all the schools to a level of superior education. This year has been extremely difficult.